A regular meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call. In a letter to the Commissioners dated March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and reading as follows. The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, dear Commissioners, a regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three at five P. M. in the boardroom of the Delta County Service Center and via Zoom and YouTube. Sincerely yours, Nancy Presraki, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we thank you for our many blessings. We ask for your guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interests of the citizens they serve. And Lord, we pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Melner?
Here.
Mr. View?
Here.
Mr. Barron?
Here.
Mr. Moyle?
Here.
And Commissioner Peterson?
Here. This meeting will come to order. Thank you for attending, everybody. The Commissioners Informational Workshop, we have an open docket tonight with several issues. Thank you very much. If any Commissioner wishes to focus on a particular subject, Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner View?
Well, I'd like to probably openly discuss the administrators' qualifications contract.
You want to use your mic, Steve? Is that better? You. All right, gentlemen, just a reminder, please speak into your microphones so it's easier for people in the crowd to hear us. Commissioner View on the qualifications of the Commissioners, or rather, the administrators.
I'd like to rehash. Is this on?
I hear you.
I guess it was off. Basically, from our committee at the whole, I'd just like to get a little more discussion on the qualifications that we're looking for in our administrator and actually a steering committee to review the preliminary applications. I mean, I haven't lost my train of thought with that, and I'm trying to convince the rest of the Commissioners that that's a very prudent way to go. And also to the projection between the degrees between, you know, private and public sector. And I know we talked about it before, but I did call up a couple other places and they still convinced me that we need to talk and cast that net of candidates to the highest quality of applicants in the first round, and hopefully we settle in the first round.
I guess I'd like to speak to that if I may.
Yes, please.
I know there's a train of thought to cast the narrowest net to bring only certain people in that supposedly have the qualifications that we're looking for. But I think to cast that narrow net, there's a good chance that we're actually going to cut out very good applicants. There are a lot of people out there that don't necessarily have master's degrees that are very knowledgeable. They can I can tell you, I know people that have a high school education that started out with nothing. They're multimillionaires now. I'm related to one. I know people that have their master's degrees that are driving semis. There's a lot of qualifications, and I think each Commissioner here is looking for certain qualifications. And and their life experience and the person that we're looking to hire's life experience is very important to this application process, this hiring process. I hate to cut anybody out because we're demanding only a master's degree. We've had people here with master's degrees before, and one reason or another, they didn't work out. One of the biggest things in this master's degree that they're talking about isn't even in finance, and one of the biggest requirements for this position is finance. So I think that, like I said, casting the widest net and getting the most people to come in, it might take them a while to go through their applications and pick the right person. But just because there's a master's degree there does not mean that they're the right person for this job. And I think that if we look at one, financial experience, and two, personality and life experience is all part of this hiring process. And like I said, I just don't feel that casting a real narrow net and only pulling from one small tiny pool is the way to go to get the best administrator for this county.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barron?
Well, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Peterson and have said so, and will continue to say so. All right. Again, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Peterson and I've said so and will continue to, and I believe the we'll put the qualifications going out need to be neutral, whether it's from private or public sector. I don't believe it's we should lean one way or the other. And we need to have that available to any candidates that think they fit the qualifications.
Mr. Barron? Oh, Barr, sorry, John. Mr. Melner?
I still think that with the research that we have done with other counties, they all look for a master's degree and at least eight years' experience. All we're looking for is a master's plus five years' experience, which is what we're probably less than most counties as far as experience and education that we're looking for. Why would you want Delta County have a lesser education person running this county?
Commissioner View?
Did you all get the U.P. Michigan Works C.E.O. succession process? Did you all look at that?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Any comments on what they recommend? Like developing a roll bills, job description? The higher qualification, what it means if you lower your qual- I just talked to the lady about an hour and a half ago, and she said if you lower your qualifications, there's going to be people that are very qualified that might want to come into your community that would not even apply. It works both ways. It works both ways on getting the best quality person. But degrees, knowledge, and experience means everything to me in hiring this new administrator. I want someone that's going to feel comfortable being here, but also has the broad demand and versatility to plan, oversee the budget, because they're going to be the pilot, and their co-pilot would be your controller or other financial departments in the community. They do strategic planning, which I haven't seen much with this board right now. They do risk management. Where on the other side, somebody with a bachelor's degree or not even in public administration would do tactical operational roles, critical roles like that, you know, maintaining and all the records and stuff, but not ask or conduct a what-if analysis that I think our county really needs for a variety of contingencies down the road, especially if the economy has a downturn. You ever have your checkbook look like it's really inflated after you get a big payday and your income tax comes in? You go out and buy a few things, and the next thing you know, a month later, you're down to nothing and you're scraping the bottom of the barrel again to make your payments? Well, that can happen with the county real easy. If we have somebody in here that just looks for the day-to-day focus and not forward-looking, forward-looking is where this extra education comes in also. Descriptive reporting, that's what we're getting right now.
Can you clarify that?
Well, it's all stuff that's happening in time at the moment. We're not getting any prescriptive analysis or reporting. You know, like we're hiring, you know, a temporary sheriff. At one time, we're hiring park people. We're hiring temporary employees or part-time employees. We're figuring out new wages for temporary positions, benefits, and there's no analysis on the impact of that given to me as a Commissioner. If you have something, please share it with me, but there's nothing given to me on how that impact is going to be happening tomorrow, next month, and five years from now. Because there's a lot of stuff you have to consider in that. This is not what I think. This is what the professionals I've talked to have told me is one of the best ways to move forward.
I have a question, if I may, for the board, for you, for Ashley. You say that we lack strategic planning, yet I have heard our interim manager, who is a controller, and I've heard other Commissioners say, watch out for a year and a half from now, because when the ARP money disappears, we're in for a double of a time. That to me, and we are moving as strategically as we can, given the circumstances. So I guess I would depend on how you define strategic, because trying to get through a difficult period might not be strategic planning, but that doesn't mean we're casting a blind eye to a year and a half now when the cliff with inflation and when we have a difficult time with our unfunded mandate all comes to a head. So I believe we do have an eye on the future, but please clarify, Commissioner, what you mean by strategic, because I am interested to hear it.
Well, first off, for our interim administrator, how do you determine a fair market value for wages, especially when it's a temporary position or the new position? I sat in on the Finance Committee. I didn't sit on any meeting on what your requirements are for doing this job. So I don't know how you formulated outside of just saying that it looks like in order to be competitive, if I'm mistaken on what was said at that meeting, because I was just attending as a private citizen, that we need to be competitive. But how do we figure that fair market value with our budget and our internal process?
I mean?
Yes.
Well, I wasn't asking you.
Well, you're not the only one who owns the floor, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Peters.
No, but I had a specific.
All right, go ahead. I asked you a question, you asked another question, so he's going to ask a third.
At the Finance Committee meeting, which I was at, I'm on the Finance Committee Board, we were looking at, yes, we were looking at wages. And we were looking to attract people that would come and stay and work here, because every time we lose somebody, we have to retain, retrain and reperson. And there was I've had a couple of discussions with Ashley about where the finances are going to be and can we sustain these people over into perpetuity that we're not going to be giving somebody a raise or hiring somebody, and then in two years firing them or laying them off. And there are the questions being asked, and there are the looking ahead as to what we can and can't do. We also can't hire, I shouldn't say we can't, but it's awful hard to hire somebody into the county for less than what they can make at McDonald's. It's just pretty tough. Our part-timers, we're getting paid twelve dollars an hour and no benefits. I can go and sit be a door reader at Walmart for fourteen dollars an hour and get some benefits. So we have to have a wage that's going to attract people, quality people. But we also have, I agree, we do have to look into the future, but we are looking into the future. And we are seeing what we think this county can afford. There's no way of predicting exactly what's going to happen in two years, five years, ten years. All we can do is look at the past to see what, look at our history to see what our future might be. And that's being done. Finance Committee and on this board, I think. I think this board does a fairly good job of trying to decipher out what's going to happen in the future. And all of us have had discussions about what we're looking at in the future and what this county will be able to sustain and what it won't. And I don't think it's a fair assessment of this board to say that we are not doing that.
Ashley, do you want to answer Commissioner View's question?
On what was?
I can repeat it if you like.
Well, your question, your statement was on what was presented at the finance. We did a three-year projection of the finance on every job that was shown to the Finance Committee of how much cost, even with the COLA increases. I have projected that.
Your position?
My position wasn't on the agenda.
No, but I'm asking you now, how did you project? Was there a mathematical formula to calculate the compensation? A range of compensation for a temporary position, since we didn't have that in our records?
I proposed to the board my position, my salary. I took seventy hours that the administrator was contracted for at hers, and I took seventy hours of what I was contracted for. You can verify with my time sheets. I have put in that time. So that's what I took.
We were talking originally about the qualifications of our administrator. We went a little bit off subject, which is fine, because the Informational Workshop allows this. Since we're not voting on anything, and now we're talking about strategic planning, we can go back to the qualifications of the administrator or talk more about strategic planning or anything else another Commissioner wishes.
I'd like to touch base a little bit on the ARP money. This county never functioned with ARP money before until two years ago. And the only money that that ARP money is only made for infrastructure and to do things to rebuild your county. It's not used for paying out retirement. It's not paid for wages. It's not paid for anything else, but making improvements on your buildings and infrastructure. Second of all, I was in also the process of hiring Ryan Bergman along with Commissioner Moyle. And at that time, we didn't have no problem at all with the experience or the education when we went to hire these people. None. And second of all, we wouldn't be in this position if a certain administrator went and fired.
Well, with all due respect, there's nothing we can do to change that, and whether you like it or not, we got to work together to move forward. And so that's exactly what we are attempting to do. The ARP money that was spent, that seven million, all went through the Finance Committee, and it all went through the board. And so everything was done, to quote Mr. View, transparently. And that's a matter of public record. Anything else, gentlemen? Commissioners, do you wish to speak about anything else? Commissioner Peterson?
Not at this time.
Commissioner View?
Yes, I was the process, who's the boss here? I remember when someone who's the boss in this group?
There's none, really.
Well, you told me, and you made it clear that one of the reasons somebody stood up at that podium and kind of talked to us on issues that they didn't feel comfortable with, that there was many comments made by members on this board is that nobody talks to their boss that way. Correct? Am I correct or wrong? I'm just paraphrasing.
I told you I would never talk to my boss that way.
Well, okay, something like that. What I'm saying now is who offers the conditions of a temporary position in this county? The employee or the commission?
I believe the board has to vote on things.
No, no. Who offers? Who tenders the agreement? There are many people in this county that would accept that position. That's all I'm saying.
I'm not sure I understand your question. I'm trying.
There is multiple people that would have stood up when we, to step in and hold our county together while we were in the process of finding a new leader. Now, what I'm saying is this board is in charge of that process and in that appointment. It's not a hiry. It's an appointment. It would be a hiry, in my opinion, if we got somebody from the outside. Now, I'm saying who offers the agreement? We are considered, I don't like using the term boss, because our bosses are the electric people that vote for us. But we are their representatives. Do we offer or tender an agreement on that part of a temporary position, or does somebody come back to us and tell us they will take it under these conditions? That's all I'm asking.
Let me historically refresh you. There was an opening. The board passed three to two to put Ashley in position. That, like it or not, that's what happened. That's the truth. That's the history. So I don't beyond that, we are moving forward with now trying to haggle.
No, we have.
I can finish, sir. Unless I stepped on you, I apologize if I have.
That's okay. I'm used to it.
Historically, we know what happened. I'm not sure I understand what your point is here. You're unhappy with what happened. You want to revisit it? We can't do that.
No, I'm asking if the commission can tender the offer for this temporary position, and it can be either accepted or denied. I want to offer something fair. Somebody's saying they're working seventy hours and they can verify it, and they're doing another, is that seventy hours for both jobs? Well, that's not that bad. Most people in exempt positions.
I put in a hundred and thirty-nine hours last time. Hundred and thirty-nine hours is what I put in my last payroll.
Then you're underpaid.
So I guess.
Nobody.
You asked me where.
Well, what I'm saying, okay, go ahead.
You've asked me where I came up with that formulation. And in past practice, the non-union position, when somebody is hired, they start out at the last person's.
Well, tell me if I'm wrong. I kind of did a quick estimate on your total salary and fringe benefits. I would say it's just less than a quarter of a million dollars if you stayed in that position for the whole year. Am I correct or not? You said eighty cents on a dollar in fringe benefits.
Yes, but now, when you say eighty cents on the dollar, that's including health insurance, all of that.
I agree.
Or, yeah. Take it for both positions.
I'm not taking it for both.
I want to point something out, sir, because you're playing some games with words here. We're going to need to keep it quiet in the audience, please. You are miked, so the people at home can hear you now. Right? We do, I don't want to ask you this again. We have the sheriff here. He would like very much for you to speak when you have the time to speak. Right now, it's the board's turn. Please respect that. I don't care. You can flip me off all day long, okay? Kiss, kiss. I like you. I'm not going to result for childish activities. You're saving a hundred thousand dollars a year by doing this. So you can, a quarter, a million dollars or two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, the people of Delta County are saving a hundred thousand dollars a year by this. And so the intimation that she's taking advantage of the people is untrue.
I a hundred percent disagree with you.
Well, that's beauty about democracy. We can do that and still get.
Okay, but I mean, a functional board that looks out for the best interest of its finances, which is what we do, just doesn't do this. I haven't had one person that I contacted with in many hours of conversation that would ever do anything like this for a temporary position. We haven't even given her what duties she's supposed to be doing outside of holding on to the fort until we get a replacement.
She is doing exactly what we asked her to do, and that's run the county, administrate the county. If there's things that are not happening that you want to see happen, obviously, as one of her five employers, you should submit that. But I take umbrage with that. She's doing precisely what we need her to do and more, and the people are saving money.
A hundred and forty hours of pay period.
Nothing to do with that.
It's almost impossible.
Commissioners, is there anybody else, please, that wishes to speak?
Yes.
Mr. Barron has the floor.
Well, this is an interim position. This is not an extended position. And we keep circling here about saying what she's doing. Reality is here, that circling is delaying getting this thing done. We need to get the job description out and get the applicants in and make the next steps. Going, keep going over the same ground again. You know, having been a farmer, the working a field too much is like giving mastitis to a dairy farmer. You know, but the reality is here, this ground's been worked up again and again and again. It's settled. We've already, we're moving forward. It's on our agenda tonight to take care of the temporary, Ashley's interim contract, also to get the job description out. And we will be discussing this again when that job description comes back up. And because we can't make any any motions or anything right now. So I believe there's been more than enough time spent on this issue.
Sure. Do you want to continue talking about it? It says fine.
Yeah, no, I don't give up easy. I just want to see how many of the Commissioners feel good about bending county rules?
What rules have been bent, sir?
The Finance Committee rule and the Personnel Committee rule was not enforced in this appointment.
Let's start with one, finance. Have you guys bent the rules?
With the temporary interim position. Didn't see a report on it.
We've had a copy, and we've had the terms that we've been working on for virtually six weeks. So it's not that it hasn't been here. It has been.
No, I'm saying the committee, was there a public finance committee to talk about the compensation for the temporary position? Excuse me if I talk a little slow. I got so many things on my mind.
That decided prior to the inception of the new finance.
So we're allowed to bend the rules?
Please hear what I'm saying. That was decided to prior to the inception of the new finance policy. So I don't know if that's bending the rules or like, can you put somebody in jail before they're born?
If I may.
Please.
This was discussed in the Finance Committee. Finance Committee was open to the public. And then the Finance Committee brought the recommendation to the board.
And where is that recommendation on this compensation package for the?
I believe it was approved, wasn't it, three to two?
Oh, the Finance Committee report. We're kind of skirting the issue here.
I'm trying to understand where you're coming.
All right, let's go to the Personnel Committee to figure out what an interim position, as an administrator, what duties should they do to help hold the county together? Everything?
That's between you and Commissioner Melner. I don't know.
Well, we never had a meeting to recommend to the board.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying. Do we bend the rules for some and not for others? Because I think not following that procedure circumvented the county policy.
Is there a procedure for the Personnel Committee? You guys are in the committee. I'm not. I mean, you're running the committee. The chairman's to my right. Do you have a procedure for that?
Yes. We get the information from
We get the information from. Ashley. If there is anything on the personnel committee to talk about. Or either one of us can put something on the. Personnel committee. To talk about.
Agreed.
We never talked about. The. Interim position at all. And I'm looking at the finance. You had three meetings so far. The third, February third, March first, and March thirty, twenty-fourth. Now, she went in interim when the fourteenth of February. I don't see anything in the finance meeting saying that we ought, you, they authorize this money.
If I may speak to that?
Yes, please.
Um, I'm not cutting you off at my. You off at my?
No.
Okay. The, just, just for everybody's information. Ashley has not. Received one penny of this so far. We have not finalized her contract and she has not received any other pay than what she got as a controller at this point. And I. When we have a finance committee meeting, we come in and we talk about it as much as anybody wants to hear. And I think as far as a report goes. That's, that's up to the, to the individual committee. Come in and give their report. And I think that we've talked about this. Over, over again here in front of everybody. We've taken recommendations because we don't agree does not mean we weren't listening. Or we weren't considering things. The, the, the meetings were held. And, and the decisions were made. They were brought to the full board and the full board made its decision. And it might not have been everybody on board with what we did, but it still was, in my opinion. Was on the up and up. There was nothing hidden from anybody that wanted to know.
When we, when we voted. For Ashley to become the interim. Was voted as. Uh, rectoract of as of that day when she took over.
Say that, repeat that again one more time?
In other words, she was paid from the time she took over.
She, she hasn't received one penny yet.
I know, but it's rectoactive from the time she took over in the minutes.
Once we okay it.
I, I, I thought we okayed a contract that wasn't written yet.
Contract, we okayed an amount. I think we okayed the fact that she was going to be the interim. But you had some sticking points and wanted additional time.
Well, I, I want, correct. I wa, I wanted. My, my, my problem now is not going through the proper channels. That's all. That, I mean, I. And I'm, and I asked each commissioner, are we willing to bend the rules? For what reason? Whatever. Because I, I believe they were circumvented here. I mean. You kind of twisted the issue, Commissioner Peterson, on, on the subject that. It was talked many times and then brought to the board, but was it talked without? Full public knowledge? Is that what you're saying?
Um, I'm saying it was discussed at finance committee and the, and the finance committee was open to the public. Anybody could have come to that. And then it was bought to the board where it was talked about in front of the, the public. Anybody could listen. And, and now we're, we're trying to move on.
Okay, we're moving on, but Commissioner Mallard, was that item scheduled on one of them three finance committees?
I don't see it on there at all.
So I'm, I'm still. Struggling to see where it was, was it talked outside of the public realm then? Because it came back pretty.
Commissioner Barron, go ahead.
Excuse me, but yeah, uh, uh. The part they, you talked about outside the public realm. It was talked about at this board meeting. Uh, in, in a sense, it was the, the, it was a committee, the whole finance committee meeting. That went through this entire information. And that's. The, while the, the vote was there and it moved forward, the language was voted on as discussed. And to put together in a contractual form, which was brought to us two weeks ago. And was not passed because you wanted to see the, see it completely put together. Commissioner, you and that's been done. And that's coming up tonight on our agenda. And that should be, that's, there's been plenty of time to look at this. There's been a lot of, we're, we're continuing to delay. And delay, and that's not serving this commission well. It's not serving the, the. People of Delta County well. It's not serving the people who work for the county. We need to move on in this stuff.
I appreciate your opinion, but I still a hundred percent disagree. It was not brought to the finance committee. It was not brought to the personnel committee. And not one person here will answer me, are we willing to bend the rules? And I, just for lack of a better word, we are in control. We are the boss put here by. The people that elected us. We are the ones that tender. The conditions and the responsibilities of a temporary position. The person or candidates, which we had multiple ones, are the ones that should. Either accept it. Or deny it. And when somebody takes an interim position, they do not give up their responsibilities. Of their regular employment contract with the county. That's still their primary duty. Or unless I'm wrong, and you can show me differently from what I have. Educated myself with. I would be glad to change my mind. Instead, all I hear of subjective opinions and, and. Indo-andos that give me no concrete facts. As I've had shared with the whole board multiple times. To the extent that you really are, are not. Looking at what's best for the county. And I know we hashed this out for five or six weeks.
I take total umbrage with that. We are looking with what's best for the county. We may not see it through your vernacular. But there's not a man on this board who doesn't want what's best for this county. In their way.
I agree with you a hundred percent. There's different ways to go there, but I, I'm kind of listening a lot from the, the community. From the experts, from what worked before. How to move forward. Not from how things happened in the past. I, I really don't like working the way things happened in the past. If you keep doing the way things happen in the past, you're not in, and are not willing to risk changes. Because changes make progress. And high rewards, and I don't see that here.
We have until six o'clock tonight. We can revisit this argument for the next twenty-two minutes. Um, go ahead if you want, because it's not, I don't think.
No, we're not.
We're eight weeks. Eight weeks, oh, trying to formulate getting an administrator. And we're still arguing about our interim administrator. And. At some point. Got to accept what we've done. And we've got to move on to get the, get this finished up. We cannot keep dragging this out. Every week that we drag this out. Costs us more. Ashley's. The rate at which Ashley is paid right now. Ends when we put in a new administrator. No matter who it is. So every day that we go on trying to get a new administrator is costing this county. And as far as. Financials. That's what Ashley's been doing for the county. Right along. She's been doing all the finances for this county right along. So. We picked what we thought was the best person to keep this county running because she knows the finance. The, and, and it, and it was a three to do vote. And like you said, we're not gonna, we're not going to agree on everything. But if we keep bringing this up, keep dragging this out, every single day that this goes on, costs this county more money. So let's just concentrate on our, and you do what you want, but I want to concentrate on their job that's coming up. Getting this position filled. So this county can get back to normal. Eight weeks, that's, that's incredible that we have not made a move in eight weeks on getting an, an administrator in this county.
Shame on us.
I agree.
I just got, I just got one comment. Uh, you're saying it's costing us, buddy. Commissioner Newmoy says it's by having her do this, it's a hundred thousand savings.
But if we could have an administrator in here working the job. And doing, doing the job one way or the other. We, we, it's, 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 this county is going to run more smoothly. This continually dragging this out week after week after week.
Because it's so wrong, Commissioner Peterson. It's so wrong if you really look at all the information that talks about. When you hire interim positions, it is so wrong.
In your opinion?
Not in mine. You don't want to keep saying, in my opinion, this is good. In my opinion, that is good. We done this and I've never said in my opinion. By what I've researched, what knowledge has been given to me. It is not my, if it's my opinion, I would probably say, I love spending other people's money. It's real, you know, it's real easy to spend others' people's money. Just spend it. But it's not other people. It's my responsibility to do my due diligence and I, I'm going to tell you right now, I do not, and I will not accept this. That way. And if it goes three to two, I will move on and try to work with everybody and moving forward, whatever else we have to do.
Goes three to two. We can't move.
No, I'm saying the way the vote was for hiring, um.
It went three to two.
It went three to two on a one-page contract. Now we have a seven-page contract or a six-page. It's not the same.
We will discuss that tonight. Um, is there anything else with eighteen minutes left of the commissioners? No, oh, you're okay? All right, Mr. Baron?
I'm good.
Mr. Peterson?
Done.
Did anybody have anything else that they want to discuss? We have eighteen minutes. Or we can end the workshop and we can go into the regular agendas. Commissioners, it's your privilege.
I would suggest going into regular agendas.
I'll support that.
All right, we have, we can end the workshop. We can both end the workshop. We can't vote on anything else. Okay, so we have a motion, we have support. Baron moved, Peterson supported, additional discussion on this floor regarding ending the workshop. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, Commissioner, thank you very much. Okay. Approval of the minutes of the previous meetings, county board minutes of three twenty-one, twenty-three. Committee of the whole of three twenty-eight, twenty-three. I would need a motion.
So.
Moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner View or Peterson?
Peterson.
By Peterson. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose that would pass. Uh, the approval of tonight's agenda. Does anybody have any additions? I do if somebody. Under unfinished business. Item number four. Discussion on the veterans and funding. The unfinished business number four. Does anybody else on this? On the board have any additions to? Tonight's agenda. Would need a motion to approve as amended?
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Peterson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would. Approve with the amendment. We have. Presentation of written communications, communications received, communications forwarded.
We're not done with the agenda yet.
We voted?
I thought we voted to add item number four.
Okay, if you want to approve, okay, let's vote for the, I thought that would be the approval, but.
Well.
Did make the motion as.
As.
Agenda as amended.
As amended, but this, I can.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't hear that because. But it's, I wanted to. Move that we take item number two on the agenda and make it the last item of the night.
Okay, item number two being what, sir?
interim administrators contract.
So Commissioner View would like to take an addendum that we take item number two. Under unfinished business and make it the last agenda of the evening. Um, I would, he has a motion on the floor, or supported by Commissioner Mallard. Okay, we have discussion, Commissioner Barron.
Procedure, we did pass the agenda.
I know.
We would have to rescind. You didn't pass it.
Yeah, but there was no second to the amendment.
I'm trying to disappoint of courtesy to Commissioner View. He didn't hear the amendment.
I know.
Well, well, i- if it was already done, can you? Repeat the motion to approve the agenda and the motion to add the item number four. And, and the vote.
We would have to rescind the agenda and then vote on a new one.
Well, that's what confused me.
Item number four and then approve as amended.
I, I didn't get who seconded, so I thought it was never.
Baron motioned, Peterson seconded. Do you want to, do you want to rescind this? I'm not going to be, I don't have a point of courtesy to the commissioner if he didn't hear it.
Was there two votes then? Was there two votes?
To add it.
Is that proper, Nancy? To, to add something, have it seconded and then to, to make another motion to accept what was added. Without voting on the first item.
It was a two motion. It was a two item motion. So the motion said add item number four or accept the amend, uh, con, contract. Accept the agenda as amended. And that amendment was number four.
But we didn't vote on those separately.
Is what I'm saying. Is that correct? Can you have double motions and vote like that?
It should be separate.
All right, then what I will do is I will ask for somebody to rescind the, the approval of the contract, so we may do this.
So it was. The motion is to add item number four under unfinished business, the veterans funding, we voted on that.
And that was passed. Okay, very good. Now, are there any other? Addendums or, is there any other changes to the agenda, Mr. View?
We didn't approve the agenda officially yet. Okay, that's, that's what I thought. So yes, I want to. Move item number two in unfinished business. To the last item.
Of the night. Under new business.
Yeah, of the night.
Okay, so we have a motion you made. Mr. Melner still makes the second. Now we have discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes. Take item number two, which is the interim administrator's contract, move it to item number thirteen. Under new business.
I have another motion I'd like to make.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move that we have a. Public comment. At the time. We make a motion to. Move forward with a contract. For the interim, interim administrator. Just on the discussion we had with that contract. Before we vote on it.
Very good. That's, you understand the motion, Nancy?
Just, just for that section.
Just for that section. Okay, you have a second then. I'll second it. Discussion. Give me a roll call on this.
Well, just a discussion. I'm not sure what the relevance of that is. It's part of our duty as a board up here to discuss that. We do have general public comment at the end. There's, there's public comment here on the agenda items already. I, I don't see the point of adding that in.
Well, my, my, my point is that it's just the one specific item. It's specifically for. That interim administrator contract.
Point taken. Roll call.
Melman.
Yes.
You.
Yes.
Aaron.
No.
Peterson.
No.
And Lloyd.
No. All right, we have now to view or to vote on the acceptance of the con, the agenda itself. Unless there's any other addendum suggested? Unless there's any other addendum suggested? All those who wish to see this agenda approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Aye.
That will pass. Very good, um. Okay, we have, um. We have, uh, presentation of written communications, communications received, communications forwarded. Yeah, we'd need a motion to put them in file.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Baron.
Support.
Supported by Peterson. All those in favor signify please by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, very good, that would pass. Alright, um, reports of standing statutory committees, special committees and others. Do we have anything?
What do we have?
We also have the pine press board minutes, public health minutes. And we have the scary trades on minutes, the partnership association.
I would need a motion to place those minutes on file.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Baron.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Melner. All those in favor signify by any just additional discussions, or you? Alright, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes. We have, um, public comment on agenda items. I have Curtis Larson. First, the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening and welcome. Thank you. My name is Curtis Larson. I live in. Beating Out Township, uh, Commissioners. I've been following the charade that you, the band of three. Along with Ms. Young have been engaged in since you opted to terminate Ms. DeSalvo. You have been playing a game with the public in attempting to convince them with the support of Ms. Young. That installing her as the interim Delta County Administrator as dictated by her terms. Is in their best interest. The public is not ignorant, as you seem to think they are. They're sick and tired of your antics. In what you deem to represent. The smoke is beginning to rise. I've had the privilege of being in business for sixty-five years and continue to have an active consulting practice here in the Midwest. If in my manufacturing operations, I had a human resources manager. Who allowed potential candidate to write their own contract. They would have been terminated immediately and asked to leave with the candidate. This is what you were allowing to occur, you, excuse me. Here with Ms. Young. Writing her own terms and conditions, uh, employment contract. It really is revolting. As the purported human resources specialist, she should know better. Are you encouraging her under false pretenses? I read her contract thoroughly and find it self-serving. Not only does she write a contract for the full-time Delta County Administrator. Under the guise of interim Delta County Administrator. She protects herself by retaining the position of controller, HR specialist. She cannot do both, but wants to command the salary of both. It brings to question the ethics of the controller, human resource specialist, is double dipping. Ms. Young, you need to do some soul searching. With the exposure of what is going on here, I would never hire you and you are becoming stained and cannot be trusted. What will others think? Is it worth it? Only you can answer. If you, the band of three, in your infinite wisdom, approve the contract. That Ms. Young should meet, then Ms. Young should immediately be required. To resign her position as controllers, human resource specialist, and the job posted for replacement. That being said, why do we need Tracy to do training? What is the justification? If you are going to do this correctly, then a job description should be developed for the interim Delta County Administrator. Indicating the functions to be performed during the vacancy period. To allow the office to function properly. There should also be a memorandum of understanding, develop outlining the duties to be performed. And stipend payment for the additional work to be performed. Interested candidates can accept or reject the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Joel Kaplan.
Good evening, Joe Kaplan, Ford River Township. I'd like to comment on two agenda items. One is under unfinished business. Oh, I'm sorry. One's under new business. And it's parks management county or RFP. And I heard the conversation at the meeting of the hall. And I took public comment twice to encourage you. To look at the data that you already have. Well, you might not have it, but the Delta Conservation District has it. And Rory Mattson's here tonight. I'm sure he will take this podium. Probably twice. When it comes to county or RFP. I think the best guidance for that is you must review. The performance of those parks over the last twelve years. Where last twelve years, the Delta Conservation District has been under contract to manage the parks on behalf of the county. And from everything we've heard, the county's been very happy about that. But what hasn't really been discussed, and I hope it's discussed tonight, is what does it cost to run the parks? Not only the cost is far as employees and projects and grants. But how much revenue is made out of those parks? Because it's significant. And over the last twelve years, all the revenue that's been generated by the parks. Has remained in trust of the Delta Conservation District. Up until this year, the termination contract that you signed. Has aspects of it that are vague, but it sounds like. Depending if it goes till May fifteenth or the end of the year. At the time that that terminates, a month after, the Conservation District decides what they give you back. And that would be twelve years worth of managing the parks. So I don't think that any of you are in a position tonight to make a determination of whether or not. It should be go out for RFP or if it's stay with the county. Because we've never seen any of the data. The data resides with the Delta Conservation District. And I know that my wife and I, Chris Williams, have been seeking that information from QuickBooks since at least last October. It's been partially fulfilled, but it hasn't been completely fulfilled. And as a unit of government, the Delta Conservation District is obligated under the Michigan Constitution. And under the auspices of FOIA to make that information available in a timely manner, and they have not. So if they haven't made it available to us, they probably haven't made it available to you. So I hope when you have Rory up here, I hope he succinctly and quickly answers the question. Of where that data is and when it's going to be shared with this commission and the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we have, uh, agenda comment. Those are the only two people that are signed up. But, uh, if you want to comment on agenda items, we will allow that. Please. Good evening.
Hello, name is Kay Rollins. I'm from Wells Township. I see here tonight you al- already approved the minutes of the March twenty-first. County Board Meeting. And I see here. Page five. Number six, under new business. RFP Municipal Attorney. Moved by Commissioner View and seconded by Commissioner Maliner. To table until new administrator is in place. Three people voted for it with Baron and Moyle voting no. So it did pass. So you shouldn't even be looking at the RFP until the new administrator is in place. But yet now I see under unfinished business, A. Three, RFP Municipal Attorney. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that it's already been voted on and you're supposed to wait. Until a new administrator is in place before you look for the RFP. Now I realize, uh, at the last meeting. That you had. Was a committee of the whole, and I sat here at that. Regular board meeting a few weeks ago and Mister, or Commissioner Moyle, you said. The only item you were going to discuss at that committee of the whole. Was the county administrator. That was it. That was it. And it says in the paper. Commission had explicitly stated, the agenda for the special meeting would only include a discussion of the job description. For the county administrator, but yet you went ahead and added more things to the agenda. I think you as, as the, um, chairperson of the commission should have stopped it right there in the tracks. I don't think you should have discussed anything other than what you had promised. That was all that you were going to. Talk about, and yet you talk about other things. So, in my opinion, I don't really believe that. You keep your word. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, please? Anybody in Zoom? Okay, very good. Committee, uh, rather, I'm sorry, uh, Zoom. If you are on Zoom and wish to address the agenda, uh, commission regarding agenda items, please do so. State your name and begin. Last call for Zoom. Very well, we will move on. Alright, we have, um, committee reports. We'll start with the administrator's report. Please turn it off, Brandon. Alright. Administrator's report, go ahead, Ashley.
This critical fault statement. Why?
Yeah, go ahead. Just simply turn Zoom off, please, for the audio.
The relocation of the utilities has begun. I also had a meeting with Brownfield Consulting Agent. Mac McCleland, cities, um, of Escanaba, manager Jim McNeil, the Terrace Bay Group. Rick Elron and Jared Drown to discuss the process of the county being reimbursed for the relocation of the utilities located on a Brown, Brownfield redevelopment project. Some great news coming forward with the Delta County Parks. We are moving, um, for online reservations, hopefully by the end of this week. I participated in a meeting with Camp Spot in the Conservation District on how the front desk screen works on the reservations. And it looks pretty user-friendly. Um, it helps, um. The personnel with checking campers in and out. Um, the options are definitely amazing. We are planning on opening. Around April seventh, like I said, and currently we are waiting on one final step of applying the credit card transactions to be directly deposited in Delta County accounts. I also spent time with the Conservation District on how the Delta County Parks bookkeeping was done. Every year, the parks would carry over an amount. This amount was applied to the following year's revenues to be spent. Then during that year, the parks would again carry over a specific amount. We also discuss projects for parks and in the upcoming months. Thank you.
I would, uh, thank you, Ash. I need a, uh, motion to put that on file.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Baron.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Additional department head updates, please, um. We have. Department heads here tonight that wish to brief the commission. Sheriff, welcome.
Well, I'm updating you on the courthouse. I said that we're gonna, this is gonna be agenda item like this meeting. Several weeks ago. Uh, I'll just update on looking at lockdown the courthouse, basically, uh, a package scanner, metal detector we talked about. Talked to you about a price of two hundred and forty thousand. One of you has mentioned some about, uh, basing this. Courthouse is a very difficult piece, so if we're going to do construction, we should do it all at once. This is a building that has to operate five days a week during the day. I, I still do expect the cost to run up in a two hundred thousand dollar range on this. And I would request one additional deputy wants to be. Start writing the scanner. I did go Monomie Pony, I was recommended by one of you. I did look Monomie Pony, they have a package scanner also. A package scanner also, it's just too low. Have a package scanner also and a metal detector. Their package scanner was not working. Uh, it was broken down trying to find a, a decent model. I met with TSA today, head of, head of Michigan. Uh, they will begin back to me on what they found for a package scanner to work best. Like I'm looking at a metal detector very similar, if not the identical what they use at TSA. And still really want to put in bulletproof windows. We have openings. Uh, between the hallway and the offices. Again, you're not seeing that at courthouses. Didn't see that either at Monomie.
Alright. Go ahead, I mean.
Go ahead. Well, I'm asking for three people. We often, our officers are spread out through, I'm gonna call it six courtrooms in our courthouse. Uh, Circuit Court, I think I said before, they have friend of the court, which children are be taken. Uh, from parents and probate and, I mean, rented court where they're assessing child support. Some of those, uh, are very fault. They're problematic. And PPOs in Circuit Court. Then District Court's got two courtrooms also.
Um, Sheriff, um. The two hundred and forty thousand dollars, you said that's for the whole package, that's for everything?
That's what I'm estimating for entire package. Of course, that's my estimation to get contractors in and. Start looking at, uh, bulletproof windows for the offices.
Has that amount been passed to these finance committee?
No, not yet.
No, I think I mentioned last meeting, uh. I'm looking for some type on a moat to start off with. So I could start moving further.
The, the glass that you're talking about, would that be similar to what's in the building and zoning office down here?
I think you see most offices walking down the hallway, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Baron, go ahead.
Okay, uh. Uh, myself and Commissioner Peterson are on the finance committee. Um, now you're, you're looking at estimates, uh, can you put that together and then bring it before the finance, and we have a discussion?
I would have to start getting contractors involved coming through. Uh. Just looking for some direction, that's my estimation. I want to see what maintenance can do versus contractors.
Hey. What's the soonest you could have those numbers comfortably for you?
I wanted to take a contractor to. You know, get a contractor through. I've talked to maintenance, I don't know at what level they're at. If you need solid numbers, I think it'd be more if I got a contractor and to give you solid numbers.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I think I could be a little more fiscal.
Uh, I, I have a question. What's, what's wrong with putting the specifications down, put an RFP out and see what's out there? Isn't that how we should be doing it? Or is this so specialized that we don't offer that?
We could, we could do an, we could do an RF.
I mean, you tell us everything we need and then it gets. Formulated into an RFP and then see if anyone's willing to do it.
It's gonna be, there's several projects. I think I can do the metal detector, my, I can have maintenance do that. Put the package scanner and then I would need an electrician to run the wires. And I think some type of desk, uh, come up with, with maintenance. The bulletproof glass, I think some of it maintenance could do, but there's other ones. Where they'd have to, I'm talking about the registered deeds. I'm gonna make, put a bulletproof glass window in there and lock down the door. And he can let in people and they're safe. So that involves cutting holes and walls and I, I, it might be beyond maintenance's capabilities.
Well, it's the scope of work that I was looking at. You must have some idea on the scope of work that needs to be done, or somebody would have.
Well, that's what I'm explaining to you. If I do a total scope of work, it's walking through, it's basically the clerk's office. But a lot of that maintenance can do with buying a bulletproof glass. There's some they can do and some I don't think they can do. If I do an RFP for the total project. Your price is gonna be higher than two hundred and forty.
Can maintenance do the doors in the courtrooms?
Oh, I've, and I forgot about the doors in the courtroom.
Well, well, figure out what maintenance can do and then put the RF.
No, maintenance cannot do the doors in the courtroom. They're going outside for that. And they did contract, uh, uh, contact a contractor for that.
And I believe we had some money from the RFP on this too.
There was some art money assigned to this. I'm not sure how much was, that would be.
I, what I remember, it was like two hundred thousand. Well, as far as, yeah, uh, there was some money out there for it. Uh, there was, uh. Sheriff, when you came to us, uh, with. You came with us, the courthouse and, uh, your list was quite big on the, um. I call them the Fauci flu fiasco funds, but the, uh. Uh, and then, but you were asked to, uh, give us the priorities on those and you came back with a couple of items. And at the time, the courthouse. And at the time, the courthouse didn't make the cut. So we, you know, this is, so you're back now with this and what you, what I hear you saying is that there's items that you think maintenance can do. So would that be, it would seem that would be prudent for you to get a hold of Corey ahead of maintenance and walk through this to see what he thinks he can handle, what he can't, and then what, what's left, what's left, what he doesn't feel comfortable with. Then that would be something that potentially is an RFP that.
I agree with you, but you first said that this was not a priority. This is falling down. Am I wasting?
You know.
Am I buying on this?
No, no, not falling down. It was, it was that when the, back was it two years ago now? It was, there was, you had a list of, I think it was four or five million dollars worth of things to do. And the courts were part of that, but it was, you were asked by Commissioner Johnson that was here to narrow it down to a smaller amount, significantly smaller, about a tenth of it. And it was, it was some other items in this courts was, was not in the primary list that you brought.
I think that that was scales recommendations to you. That wasn't mine. I remember Emily talking about scales. They wanted back hallways. There, it was, you're right. It was so extensive that we discussed even building a courthouse on this.
Right, right. We sat down. I had community meeting to do that.
Yeah, then I don't recall anything else after that.
Corey's chiming in right now. Our maintenance guy's chiming in. Go ahead.
Hey, Corey.
So I, I believe some of the existing windows that need bulletproof glass to be putting, Corey might be able to do. I don't have my cell phone with me.
Can you get with him and then come, we can all, you know, a meeting of the finance committee pretty much anytime. So I mean, if you can get some numbers on a page. On the 21st, this was an agenda item. I think there was some talk of where we're at with the courthouse. There is some confusion here. But we could have a meeting anytime in a week if you want. I mean, we only need 18 hours, obviously, to post it. So how long do you need to?
No, because it sounds like you want final numbers. And to get final numbers, I'm probably gonna call a contractor in to get, I think Corey already did, because they said.
I'd be happy.
They had quite a bit of recommendations.
I don't need final numbers. If it gets you, you know, if you feel like you're under a bit of a crunch, I'd take your recommendation on that. You know, we could get you started and then go in the final numbers if you'd like.
Yeah, Corey.
And it could be a little bit.
Hold on, I'll put you on speaker. John?
No.
You there, Corey?
For those you don't know, Corey is a department head for maintenance department and.
Okay.
Who we work for in department. At updates. Best they can do.
You might have to just translate, John.
Yeah.
Not gonna help much.
Yeah. I'm trying to get him on speaker.
You could have.
Don't wanna call my phone and I'll.
Can you, can you call Ashley? Call Ashley.
I texted him this home.
He was saying something about he's been working on the windows and that.
Yes, he might be. I did talk to him. I didn't. I was unable to touch base with Corey today.
Okay, go ahead. You're on.
Live action.
Hey, Corey, are you gonna?
Well, I was just gonna tell him that we already have the, the door readers and all that stuff. We're gonna do, the maintenance is gonna do. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we're hearing you.
So all the door readers, we're gonna do ourselves. We started on the windows, but I thought we were waiting on the, the judges to decide what they wanted to do first.
Yes. Yes, the judges wanted the doors so they could lock them from the, lock them. But that's one thing. We had to change the doors in Circuit Court. The other issues were the windows. I'm not looking at windows in the court and the courts. When I'm looking at the windows in the hallway where the public has access.
Can we put an RFP out for the doors since maintenance won't be doing that? We can get that moving as soon as possible.
I think he already has been moving. I know he had a contractor in already looking at that, because that's a little bit bigger job. We have to put them, move them apart from each other. Maintenance has been working on that. Door readers might take quite some time to get in. There's well over 100.
Any questions for Corey? Or the sheriff?
I guess one question. I don't, I don't know how to go about working this out where we get the, the best possible price. Like you said, as far as getting a cut and dried number. I, that, and I know through my contracting career, that was pretty hard anyway, because the price materials are changing all the time and, and that kind of thing. I don't know, Mr. Barron, Commissioner Barron, would you think it would be helpful to have a finance, have the sheriff maybe pull together whatever you can and come talk to us at a finance meeting?
Well, I suggested that a little bit earlier, but that as far as it's to find out what Corey has, and he's given us some right here now, what Corey's already working on.
Mm-hmm.
And then separate down with what we think is, you know, the sheriff needs, needs to go out to the fire, that maintenance can't do and can go out for an RFP. I think we, we need to get that.
I'd like to get maintenance starting to work. I like to order the bulletproof glass for the ones. I believe maintenance can do ones where the openings are ready there and install the bulletproof glass. And if I was wrong, if I'm wrong, we could do an RFP. But I get maintenance working on that area. Contractor downstairs spend the best price on bulletproof glass.
General, you want him to RFP that for the finance committee or do we authorize just a certain amount? Start with?
How mu- how much do we have in the that ARPA money or whatever it's called that's supposed to go?
In the vicinity of 200,000.
Well. Would it be proper to make a to move that we can utilize that money up to, I mean, utilize money up to whatever that amount up to whatever you can get done in securing that courthouse at this point?
I, I think as far as a motion, I think it.
Go to the finance?
Go to the finance committee and then.
But we have money, so I mean, you know.
Right, but, but that way we can get that answered and then bring it to the finance committee and then we can come back with that recommendation. We do have two more meetings this month, so there'd be a chance to get it done.
We would need a motion then to move this on to the finance committee.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner View, seconded by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion? Okay, then, all those in favor of moving this on to the.
Can we just hold one second?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, I, I was just. We're gonna bring this to the finance committee and Sheriff and if you would like to attend and give us any insight at the finance committee, I would appreciate it.
Okay, I think a lot of that will be, be Corey at that point. He's been, I know he's been working on the doors and he would be able to get you more insight on the.
Okay, that's fine. Whoever can come in and talk to us about it and then we can make it, make a decision on how to proceed forward. So.
Guys, we have a motion on the floor and we have a second. We have additional discussion to move this on to the finance committee. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff. Additional, thank you, Corey, if he's still on the horn. Okay, additional department head updates, please. Additional department head updates, please. Mattson, welcome.
Thank you. Well, I thank Joe for the introduction. I had this all planned. Conservation District's been listening since January and even before that. And there's a lot of things that are going around that aren't even close to reality. So I have a couple of things here we're gonna talk about. One, I brought up at the last regular meeting where it was mentioned that Mattson owned the entire south part of the county forest and was denying access. I know Commissioner View has this, but I don't know, and I encourage you to go to Qpad and look this up. But I didn't know if you could or you did, so I'm presenting it here. These are the total ownership right now, totally surrounding the Delta County forests. Who owns it? How big it is? Where it is? And you'll see that the west side, the north side, east side is totally purchased. The south side still has a mile and a half. That Lime Timber Company, which is basically me, Plum Crick Warehouse. Anyone can go buy those forests. So the south side is pretty much still open. The other thing on the county forest, I did give Commissioner Johnson a call today because when the forest was purchased, Commissioner Johnson was the chairman of this board, was the liaison, and he was also on the finance committee. So I, I called him today and asked him if I could bring up his name and make sure that he knew exactly what I was gonna say. So Pat, if you're out there, I'm doing it. And basically, any complaint that we had on the county forest since it was purchased, whatever those complaints were, Commissioner Johnson and myself went out on every single complaint. Every one. Not just partial. Some of those were complaints that turned out to be just projects we were gonna do and they got reversed and other things happened. But other ones were self-serving to individuals who earlier had put gates on that property before the county bought it, had a camp on that property before they bought it, had 137 blinds that we had to remove on that property. Tore those roads up so bad that you couldn't even drive on them. And one of the agreements was try to get a pickup truck, not a car, off TruX Road to the parking lot in which the county doesn't even, very, only owns a half a mile of that basically mile long or mile and a half long stretch. So we worked heavily with Plum Crick Warehouse at that time. Now it's owned by Lime to put in culverts and to fix that and that, and that was, what happened there. But Commissioner Johnson along and then came back to this board on some things and also to my board. And those all complaints were either decided that they were furious or there was something to them. Projects. Every project that we had out there was approved by my board and also brought to the county board before we even started doing things. And there was another comment made at the last meeting, I believe, that the Conservation District is only catering to wildlife groups. Wildlife groups are the only ones who've come to the table. And they've also written grants, so this county didn't have to spend money doing projects out there. And the other ones were partnered with Plum Crick or Lime depend, excuse me, Plum Crick or Warehouses who had it at, at the time. We did contact the Delta County Non-Motorized Group. And we were gonna have a meeting on two issues. One was seeing if it was possible to put a cross-country ski trail out there and then actually plow that road through the grant. I contacted the DNR the other day. This county is under no obligation to winter plow it. It's a forest. And it costs a lot of money to do those things through that grant. County wants to do it, they can. And, and, and keep that up. But we, we tried to borrow the unit that would go behind a tract vehicle from the DNR and we, we might have been able to. That kind of got tabled. But in that meeting with the non-motorized group, there was talk about that, but there was also talk about putting, continuing the bike path because we knew the new bridge was going in across the river and they had a bike path on that. And it goes to Pioneer Trail Park and it dies. So how to get to P Road because the bridge was taken out. So that was the other thing on the agenda. We set it two hours before the Qpad had a meeting, I think on trails and the whole UP if I remember right. And we were the only ones and Bob Satywitch from the township that showed up. That group never showed up at that meeting, so we figured it's not a priority. So it's not the district's responsibility to go to those groups. The wildlife groups have come to the district. And they put up the money and they put up the grants and they've helped with the work. Because that, that was brought up why we prioritize wildlife groups. We really don't prioritize them. They show up. Park financials have been a big one. There was something that was brought up at the last one that Sheriff Moyle was talking about when the district went from May 15th or if we do to December 31st, he said it's an olive branch. And then right after that, during public comments, somebody came up and kind of got on his case because it's not an olive branch because the district has been paid to do that job. Let me tell you, folks, from 2011 to October of 2010 until September 30th of last year, the county has given the district $50,000. At, at the beginning, it wasn't much because everything was in disarray. When the pavilion came in, I believe it was 2012, could have been 13. We also then subtracted 18,000 out of that 50. So what the county gave us and when that pavilion came in and it got paid off this year was $32,000. That's what the county gave us. Everything else, the Conservation District, by the way we ran it, what we did, searching out grants, looking at everything else, we provided the other fund. So I just want the public to make sure they understand there was a lot of hours. There was a lot of different things to bring in that extra revenue. We got $32,000 unless it was a special project and then we came here. If the board had the money, they approved it. A good example is the sewer at Pioneer. And if they didn't, then that was okay too. But, but we, we constantly did that. The other thing is how much money does the parks have? And I just heard it here tonight. I did hear the comments from the same individual made them tonight at the committee, the hall. And I wasn't there, but and also a comment from him that they've been foiling the district. They have a lot. Nobody, and we, we have them all. Nobody has foiled us just for the park. We would have provided that. The county now, and I believe Commissioner Melner can back this up. This is your fifth year, would be your fifth year. Okay, for four years then. Commissioner Melner, 12 years for you, Commissioner Moyle? Two years for you, Commissioner Barron? Every single year since 2011, we have provided the county with that information. And we have come in the public and done this in the month of March. The only reason we didn't come this March is you guys got a lot of big agendas and that usually takes us a half an hour. And I thought, well, there's 10 o'clock at night, right? So, so we've been holding it, but we will. And we've always done that in March because by then all the bills are in and we've also waited because of the other 25,000, which people have a misrepresentation on what that was actually for. And that was also to bring money into Delta County and to assist the county on the county lands. Not just the county forest, because we got that way before the county forest. So basically, the county has that since 2018. Previous administrator requested not just the report that the board wanted because, you know, it showed what came in, what went where, but it didn't get right down to the pennies. 2018, 19, 20, 21, and now 22, the county has that data, the entire QuickBooks report, right to the penny where everything went and, and how it went. In 22, it is true, there was no set amount that the district got. We prioritize doing projects. And I have employees who are there, here even tonight, listening that were here since then. We always prioritize infrastructure projects and things because that was part of the reason the county asked us to do it. Them buildings and stuff were in disarray. So we prioritize that first. And then if there was money left over, that's what happens. So we can do things a little different than I'm guessing the county. You have unions, you have other things, but the basic way it worked is there was two individuals. One was full-time who agreed to work for a certain amount. And if we did better, even though they might have put in more time, if we did better, then they got some incentive pay at the end. Wouldn't it be wonderful if that happened all over? Okay, so that's the only way we could do it, getting 32,000 a year. So basically, they have the reports. Like Ashley said, I sat down with her the other day because you guys gotta make a big decision on what you're gonna do with those parks. I would recommend that it totally stays with the county. I don't think a private sector group will take it. Most people who own a business want to make what? 30% or better net? If you don't, usually those businesses fail. Or you do a lot of work. Or you do a lot of work other than that. So I know Commissioner, well, every commissioner has it. I put it together originally for Commissioner View because, uh, he was trying to find information on, uh, work agreements. So I put together what I believe the Delta County Parks manager would have to do, and it's pretty extensive. Um, so, and then I sent it after, I gave it to Commissioner View first, I went right over to his shop, gave it to him. Then I sent it to the other five commissioners and I think Ash. Um, so you have that. That's what the manager is gonna do. When you come time to pay this individual or start them out, you gotta remember that manager will be putting in seventy to eighty hours every single week while that park's open. Maybe not the first part of May, maybe not October, but that's the person who shows up in the office. If any of your part-time people or seasonals, I should say, uh, seasonals, cause that's the way to go, not just part-time, saves a lot of money. Don't show up, they're sick, something happens. We leave the office bare, that person comes in. And that person oversees that, oversees other things. They can help a little bit, you know, wi- with the maintenance, but not necessarily. But that person shows up at two, three, four, five in the morning. If you really start to think about it, you know, I used to own a bar and grill. That closed that too, thank God by state law. But the parks don't, and there's a lot of drinking that goes on in those parks. I've watched campers and I'm not saying anything bad, it's just reality. I've watched campers come there and let their three-year-olds, four-year-olds be watched by us eight-year-olds, if you can imagine, while they're sitting around drinking. And then when you find their kids are gonna get hurt and you bring them over, they're mad at you. So, uh, pavilions, which go on, a lot of drinking at the pavilions regardless of what it is when those close. You, you have camp posts there that late at night. Camp posts are kinda like a security guard versus true law enforcement. Yeah, you can get there, you can talk, but when that doesn't work, you can't put your hands on people. You can't, you shouldn't get in fights and that's not what the camp post jobs are. So that manager is gonna get the calls. They have to go down there, then they make a decision where they call law enforcement. Because if you got your camp post calling law enforcement all the time, that's probably not the best thing in the world either. Cause they're busy doing actually other things. So they have all, they have all those, um, uh, things. And, and with that report, you know, on this finance, again, Pat Johnson, his whole time, John, uh, Melner, Bob Barron and Dave Moyle saw those and the county has them all. County has them all. Um, COVID money, we fought like crazy. Not for the district, it's project money. We fought hard, terribly hard, cause Ashley was there as the controller. We fought hard just to get two percent of seven million dollars. We thought that was fair. So I, I attended all those meetings, I argued and argued and argued. We originally asked for two hundred and fifty thousand and obviously we, we thought that was high, we were gonna be blessed if we got it, but we would've finished all the projects in the park. But what got approved by the finance committee? And then what this board should've approved was two hundred and five thousand. So I asked Commissioner Moyle, he was on the finance committee, what it was without telling him, he said two oh five. I called Commissioner Johnson today and asked him, what, what was supposed to be approved? And he said, just over two hundred thousand dollars. And I said, so two oh five sounds good, and he said, yes. So I said, you know, we only got a hundred and sixty-five? So what happened with the previous administration, we lost forty thousand. We shouldn't have lost that forty thousand. And we didn't lose it, Delta County Recreation lost. So basically what's out of that is one sixty-five minus the forty-two thousand, three hundred, let's just round it up to five hundred. So that money's still available for projects. We also rolled over, I've been telling this board roughly a hundred thousand, right? I said, yeah, a little bit more, it's a hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred. Matter of fact, I got it with, right to the nose. We normally roll over between twenty-five thousand and forty thousand. This is something the county will not have to do. Why? Cause you're the county. If the district owned that, we wouldn't roll over money, we'd keep money for future stuff in the next year, but we wouldn't have to roll it over. Cause remember, the years before we got fifty thousand, minus eighteen is thirty-two, and we couldn't make it until registration came up. It is, it was impossible. We had to pay one full-time person, a half-time person at that time, and then pay all the bills. So basically that's why we rolled over money and it was always somewhere between twenty-five. And so two thousand twenty-two, um, excuse me, two thousand twenty-one, we rolled over forty thousand, three hundred and four dollars and ninety-two cents, which got added to the fifty thousand. Bessie's gave us twenty-five, um, twenty-five left and a hundred thousand dollars. So basically, um, I subtracted all those out for Ashley to say, what can these parks run on? Cause you're not gonna count your rollover, right? That's not money the following year, you're not gonna count grants. Those are for usually for projects, maybe you can pull a little, uh, administration out of it. Um, and you, uh, yeah, the allocation, the rollover and any grants. So that's what was in the tenure agreement. And that was my idea to pull all that out. Timber sales, anything else that was done because the district was doing nothing for that money. I mean, we're writing the grants or, but basically the district shouldn't have got ten percent for that. So basically that left at the end of fiscal year twenty-two, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and ninety-six cents. Okay? Out of four hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents, which was basically, then I subtracted the three out to come out the other. So at the, now, we didn't have to do this in twenty-two, but we used the twenty-three agreement. And that was the ten percent, right? So ten percent of three hundred and seventy-one thousand, real quick, thirty-seven thousand, right? Okay, so that's, that's what the district took. And everything else went back in, except the big, um, what we moved to this year because we didn't know what was gonna happen. And we said that before. You know, I see different things in the paper and it's not that she's quoting me wrong, but she's taking it out of content. In the last article that was just, I think here a little bit ago, it said that Executive Director Rory Mattson said that one of the stipulations that has to be in the new contract is that the county must hire a county manager. That's not a stipulation, that has nothing to do with us staying till June, I mean, December twenty, uh, thirty-first. It was a recommendation that if somebody wants to see what we're doing, get them hired, him or her, and if you don't, that's okay too. But it's not gonna be, uh, a criteria when, when, when we bring that forward. Um, so we rolled over this hundred and eleven thousand, six seventy-two, twenty-five. And then we took out the forty-two thousand, three eighty, that was paid by the county for the cabins, right? We took out the seventy-five thousand, which was the new allocation. That new allocation, we asked for seventy-five thousand because of COVID. The county, well, I, I'm not gonna say the county. The governor shut us down in twenty-twenty. So we came in front of this board and we said, okay, you give us fifty and you're taking eighteen away, we've got thirty-two and we don't know when we can open. You want us to lay off our grounds person? I mean, we can't afford it. And they said, no, keep them on, we'll give you twenty-five thousand. Well, we never had to take the twenty-five thousand. I said, don't give it, just hold it. And by the time we got going. But the reason we asked for the seventy-five thousand is our ground, grounds person because of what he can do besides payroll taxes, he gets no benefits, by the way. So he pays the benefits out of his own salary. So that's seventy-five thousand for salary and his taxes, uh, payroll taxes, um, comes to seventy-four thousand something. That's why we asked for the seventy-five. So no matter what happened, governor, president, Chinese, it doesn't matter. We would have somebody that we knew we could pay for the full year, our employee, not our property, not our grounds, nothing like that. And that person could start on October one and know they could go to September thirtieth for this county. Cause I came here and talked about it. Because if we couldn't have opened and nobody was there, how long do you think it would've taken for the grass to grow in May, first part of June? How many wood ticks you think would be out there? How many snakes would start moving in? How many skunks are moving in? That's not what people look for in a true park. I know when I had Commissioner, Commissioner View out the other day, like he said, this is woods, this isn't a park. Well, correct. So, and also, what about the security there? You know, police officers don't go in there anymore than what they have to, that's not one of their main missions. But if you're not checking to see what trees fall on something in the spring, you end up exactly what you did in two thousand nine, I believe it was, out at Fuller, Fuller Park. Where the whole forest had blown down in, in, uh, the Wednesday before Memorial Day, it's not open. So, so, so we did that too. So basically what I've come up with and sat with Ashley quite a while on this and talked about it is that we wanna roll some of those things over and I guess we just can because that's what they were for, to re-figure out what we're gonna prioritize in upgrades for this year. And we listed one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, that we believe we can finish by December thirty-first. So these, some of these will be new, some of them will be working on buildings that need to do. But when the county then takes over on January one, you're almost gonna have a turnkey operation. And yeah, you always have to have maintenance on buildings and, you know, regular maintenance, but you will not have to worry about a big project. And that should be pretty nice to do, I would think. We, we didn't have the luxury of doing that when we took over. So basically we're looking at somewhere between, right now, about two hundred and thirty-six thousand that we wanna spend on projects. Uh, the other thing is all of our payroll and taxes for seven people, which I know the county can't do this, and I don't believe a private business can do this. One hundred and fifty-four thousand, fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Making sure I got the right number. Do I, Ash?
I think so.
And, yeah, you probably don't have it. And, uh, so, so that's what we paid for that whole thing. So there was hundreds, if not thousands of volunteer hours that I don't think, county can, you can get volunteers in there, but they gotta sign volunteer slips. But you're not gonna be as, as easy as the district. The district, right now, employs one non-exempt individual and one, two, three, four, five, five exempt individuals and the, the Conservation District Board. I think there was even now and then if our county commissioner would come and help and just volunteer. And I know Nancy did too, I thank her a lot. I saw her put on gloves. So that's gonna be the tough part. And I've been, I've recommended to Ashley and probably do that more when the work, the descriptions are put together and you guys accept things and that. But I really believe to pull this off, you need to hire one manager, like I just discussed and with that. You need to hire a full-time, full-time manager, full-time grounds person. And you need to pay them well. I mean, I sat on the la- last finance committee meeting and find out part-time and then I think even full-time, unless they were there more than, uh, four years, they're making like sixteen dollars an hour. Sure, they got nice benefits. But if you're a young person and you live on sixteen dollars an hour, you can't eat your benefits. So I don't know what you guys can do with that. I know unions will be involved in different things, cause the union contacted and asked me what I thought. And I'd said, I think the county should have it versus the private. But it's gonna be interesting to see because you're going to want some money left over at the end, not for a rollover, but you're gonna want some money left over to keep things up. I hope you don't let it all go down and of course, it's in good shape, so probably five years you may not have to. But after that, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, and that's what the county sport, forest is supposed to provide to you. So, um, I've worked out a lot of these numbers. Like I said, the county does have it, all these numbers, every blooming year, what went on. And, uh, we never violated the contract or agreement with the county. And the first four years, we did it without it. First, first year, the district itself, which was very poor back then, put in about a hundred and ten thousand of our own money with a handshake that at the end, the county would pay us back. So we're coming to you too with an agreement, but it's gonna be a handshake again. Why? All the money before went through the conservation district. This is scaring us. Okay, so if you take out the project money, what we've collected so far, we're still paying bills, right? Electric and whatever from the fall? We've only collected thirteen thousand, seventy-five dollars. And that was of, uh, Saturday. And the reason for that is what's coming in? Our seasonal. Our seasonals and some pavilion. And, and, and some of the seasonals have paid in full, some still have to pay half. So I didn't go back and calculate that, so that'll probably go up to twenty thousand. But normally the last week of March, that's why it's not too bad with the registration system. I'd like it up and running, but like Ashley said, it's not the county's fault, it's not ours, it's the credit card. Cause Camp Spot works with a certain credit card company, we're pushing hard and that's the only thing that's gotta be done. Hit a button, it'll be great. I don't do computers, but it'll be great for people, cause it looks like it's pretty easy. But where's that money gonna go? To the county. We were gonna put it through our bank account and then we thought again of this county. Then in December, January, you'd have to start all over, get with Camp Spot, get with thing, reverse everything, get the treasurer, treasurer's department, I'm guessing that's where, uh, um, Ashley went to the treasurer and tried to get all these things done. We said, no, we'll just do it now. So I'm not sure how we're gonna bill you, but we're gonna have five employees that are district employees paying them, uh, you know, their, uh, the taxes, unemployment, things like that and some bills that are coming. And basically, we got no money coming now. So, and that, and that's why part of the agreement had to be rewritten, cause that wasn't in the old degree. If we had all the money, no problem. We've never had a problem accounting for every penny that was, went through those parks. And we never had a county board question any of it. And I spent a lot of time in those presentations that you three can remember, making sure you guys knew, asking, is there any more questions? Do you wanna, uh, more updated, you know, QuickBooks, uh, uh, you know, accuracy to the penny? No, 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 just give us what came in, what came in in camping for each, what came in in wood? What came in in these type of things? What did you pay in electric and da-da-da-da-da? Because I can tell you last year in twenty-two, this is twenty-three, so originally twenty-two again. Total, um, utility bill, basically fifty grand electric. I'm guessing anybody on Upco got the letter? Mark got it. Starting July, whatever it is, ten percent. That tells me it's another six grand, right? Just rounding it up. So there's another six grand shot in a rear. Uh, so, um, like I said, we're working very well with Ashley. I really appreciate it, cause she is, has the auditing background and the financial background. So, um, we, we did talk a little bit about what the county can do as far as finances. I know with the union, you have to be careful because, you know, you have union contracts and, and for sure, one of these people will be that. And then the, uh, the other ones hopefully are seasonals. Sixty days and of this, not in sixty days, six months. And of the six months, if you pull them out, you still have to pay unemployment, but you don't have to pay it out. That's huge. So basically if you get over that six months, we did it one year by accident, by two days. Now, we had to pay unemployment for the rest of the winter. So, you know, tha- that's fairly important. Um, but we looked at it and if that seems to be a little more free, cause it's salaried exempt, but the union position might, might need a little bit of negotiation. And I know right now, just because what's happening, I hear it too, like you guys do, is that a lot of the department heads, a lot of the workers and, you know, they're all coming to you now, right? So, um, I, I pity you there, I guess, cause I do expect a heck of a downfall coming in two years. I know the city of Escondaba is experiencing now. Um, so, uh, so I'm just trying to go over my notes here, so I don't forget anything. And so, again, that our biggest concern right now is making sure that agreement says that the county will reimburse us for costs. And they'll all be listed right to the penny, so there's no problem there. But, uh, so, so that's one of the things through this that I think you guys are gonna have to look at. And if we, and if we get it, I'm hoping, uh, number three here tonight, that you guys decide it's the county that will keep the parks. Um, and then also on number nine, employee wages and benefits. I know there was some talk at the finance committee with that too, but, uh, there might need to be a little more discussion on that. And the only reason is, right now we're paying them, right? So that's not gonna change till December thirty-first. But when a manager comes on and that, you probably have to pay this year if you put one on for us to, so they can shadow us. But then, uh, you won't have to really worry about that one till what, December, well, January one. So I don't know if there's any other questions, but these are a lot of the things that were brought up. And, um, basically, you know, I don't know, people get a hold of this stuff and I guess it's just the times. Uh, they assume what's going on or whatever, and then they just, you know, come here. But a lot of false statements have been made in the last three months. Any questions? Any questions?
We didn't give you any money for this contract period, correct?
Yes, seventy-five thousand. So I'm going to give, I'm going to tell you exactly what you gave us. I got that here, it's very.
No, no, I, I just wanted to know and that's going to cover for that employee right now? But it's going to cover for that one employee, but not the new one that we need to shadow if we get one.
If you get.
Okay.
Right, but then we don't have any money for other. That we will be hiring, right? So again, we rolled over a hundred and eleven. Uh, the um. Uh cabins through uh, COVID forty-two, three eighty. And then the seventy-five thousand, so that seventy-five thousand is sorting in. But right now, without that rollover and, and without that forty-two, we're running a deficit right now. We've never run a deficit in the parks. Right now, we, besides those, you know, if you take those out, right? We brought in thirteen thousand, seventy-five dollars, we've spent fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifteen, seventy-six. So that's on the one person. The people at the end of the season, because remember it's thirty-first, I mean the thirtieth, right? So October one, we had a few employees on and every single bill. Our electric bill in October is one of the biggest. And the same thing with November because of why? Because of the uh, spooktacular. So.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Any other department heads please wish to speak? Any other department heads please wish to speak? Gentlemen, do you need a brief recess before we advance or?
We move, we have a recess, five minutes.
We will uh, take a five-minute recess so people can use the bathroom. We will call the meeting back in five.
And we'll come to order.
Start heading towards your seat, please. Thank you very much. Um, we'll wait for our administrator. There she is. All right, uh, the meeting does come back to order, please. Thank you. General orders of business, unfinished business. The process of hiring a new administrator is up in front of the commission commissioners. What is your pleasure? Item A would be the job description. Anybody want to start first, please?
Yeah, I suppose I, I thought we had this kind of. Uh, taking care of many of the whole meeting as far as the job description, um, unless I'm missing something and uh. That we take the, many of the whole meetings, uh, recommendations on that.
We have the uh, Nancy, do you have the uh, can, suggested language that we? Move towards the um. This night. From one week ago.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Moyle and seconded by Commissioner Barron to recommend to the full board. A minimum of a bachelor's degree in business or public administration. Or closely related field with specialization in finance and/or management with three to five years' experience.
All right, that is the recommendation from the committee of the whole to tonight. At the committee of the whole, obviously, we could not vote on that. We could vote to move the suggestion forward, so I would need a motion. To uh, actually adopt that.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Moved by Commissioner Peterson. To adopt the language that clerk Prisrocky had just stated.
Actually, there was an addition to that. The second part of it was. Any satisfactory combination of education, experience and training may be substituted for the above. Public sector experience preferred.
That, that's, um, I know you made a motion there, Commissioner, I.
I can rescind that motion.
All right, motion rescinded, go ahead.
Okay, what uh, Spurzrocky just. Said that the uh, the last part that was added, the first part of any satisfactory combination of education experience, any um. Uh, any satisfactory combination of education experience and training may be substituted for the above. Um, it's the public sector experience preferred. It uh, it, it's now flips this thing to the public sector instead of keeping it neutral. Um, I would like to make a motion to rescind those last four words and. And I, well.
Will you uh, please read the language of your motion with the words omitted?
Well, my. What I would like to rescind is the uh. First part of it, any satisfactory combination of education experience and training may be substituted for the above. Which was the education, the minimum bachelor's degree in business or public administration or closely related field with a specialization in finance. And/or management. Uh, and then the experience that requires in three to five years of relevant experience. Uh, what I'd like to eliminate is the last sentence, which is public sector experience preferred. You just eliminate that completely. The first part of it is uh, I think very good, but the last part flips us into an uh, situation where we're, we're uh. Uh, we've leaned towards that we want public sector and I want to keep this thing as neutral as possible between public and private.
So simply for the purpose of your motion, clerk Prisrocky, would you read that again with the omission of those four words? So there's no confusion.
A minimum of a bachelor's degree in business or public administration or closely related field with special, specialization. In finance and/or management with three to five years' experience. And any satisfactory combination of education, experience and training may be substituted for the above.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Barron. There a second to that motion?
I will support.
That's supported by Commissioner Peterson. Now we have time for discussion, gentlemen. Commissioner View?
I know uh, at the committee of the whole meeting, I had uh. Put in that I, I supported having the public sector, um. Further thinking about it and trust me, I spend a lot of time thinking about what goes on here, believe it or not. I, I, I agree with Commissioner Barron that uh, we are looking to get the best that we can get. And to put uh, put a stipulation that we prefer community, uh, public service. Um, I think is just a, again, an eliminating factor and um. Talking with people myself, uh, that have been involved in hiring and firing and, and that kind of thing, um. Just. They say keep it, keep it simple and keep it open and attract as many people as you kind of choose from to get your best. Your best candidate. And that's, that's where I stand.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner View?
A public sector preferred. We are a public sector. And it's only a recommendation, it's preferred, it does not say mandatory and. Go along. We're going to get the best person with this job qualifications with potentially the lowest qualifications. It's my opinion.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mellner? Uh, I still say that it should be masters and it's has to be. Just what uh, Commissioner View said.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barron?
Uh, I've already stated.
Okay, roll call, clerk Prisrocky?
Mellner?
No.
You?
No.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moyle?
Yes.
All right, very good. You have uh, item number B posting and advertising. Um, this will be uh. I would, would like to entertain a motion, have Ashley cast the net tomorrow. And that we start searching for uh. We start posting on MMA, uh, MML, MMRMA.
I support.
Okay, I, I can't make the motion, but could you, would you make the motion?
Well, I thought you said.
I said I would like to, but I mean.
Well, go ahead.
I'll make the motion that we uh, direct interim administration to start advertising this tomorrow.
Support.
Okay. Moved by myself, supported by Commissioner View, additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, that would pass. The process of receiving applications. We had a process that was uh, set forth by the committee of the whole. And that clerk Prisrocky is, along with the uh, chair of the personnel committee would receive the applications.
So moved.
Support, we have motion and we have support. Additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, very good. Okay, review of applications and selection. It was uh, determined in the committee of the whole that we suggest that the committee of the whole, meaning the board. Commissioners, the five of us, receive and review these applications and furthermore do the interviewing process. So that would be um. Items D and E, I can do them separately though. Let's do item D review. I think they were submitted separate, set together, weren't they? No, okay, they're separate items, very good. So um, reviewing the application would be and selection would be by the committee of the whole or this commission. I would need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson, additional discussion. All those in favor?
I would like to just make the comment.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the comment that we um, consider. Having a hiring committee go through them originally and there was support of that uh, with the township association. They sent us a letter saying they would recommend uh, two people out of the township that would be like, would like to be part of it. So if we can consider doing something like that, I would appreciate that and I can't make a motion into it, but we'll see how this one goes.
We have a motion, um, support. We, no, we got a motion.
I, I, I didn't make a, I didn't make a motion, Don. I, I was, I was making.
Yeah, it was all right.
I was making a comment before we vote on the motion that uh. I, I, I wanted to get the public involved and we did get a letter. I, I don't know if you want to comment on something about that process doing it that way.
Well, in our, in our uh. Communications that we received, we received a letter from the township association. And that is all our townships and they all agreed that. They would like to have at least two people from the townships. In the search for our administrator going over, going over it. So at that time, I, I don't know, we can make a motion on.
We have a motion currently on the floor, but your, your opinion is, is.
Well, we're trying to steer the vote to be no right now and redo it. The biggest thing about the, these people wanting to help out. Does not take any authority of the final product being done by this board. It just helps our board move faster and we'll have two stacks of applicant, applications, I hope, big stack here. And ten, ten or less here that are already kind of pre-screened with the qualifications. Where we as commissioners have everything, but we can hone in quickly. On the highest qualified ones that were recommended to us by this committee that's looking out for the best of the county also.
Commissioners, anything else, please? We have a motion on the floor. We have a second additional discussion, gentlemen. Roll call, please.
Mellner?
Yes.
You?
No.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moyle?
Yes, but I think you have a commissioner wants to change his vote.
Yeah, I thought it was something, something else.
It would be no. All right, that passes three to two. It, um, interview by the, it's item E, also submitted by the, uh, Committee of the Whole. Interviews to be conducted by the Committee of the Whole. We need a motion on that.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson, additional discussion, Commissioners.
Steve, I see your wheels rolling, I'm just, I'm trying to.
No, no, I, I mean, yes, I, I expect us as the commission to do the final interview, so I, I support it.
All right, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that would pass. Very good, um. We have, uh, the interim administrator's contract has been moved, so please, uh, disregard that item. It'll be item last under new business, RFP for municipal attorney. Um, you are correct, this was brought up before. Uh, it was decided to wait and then we had, and Commissioners will do that from time to time, they will revisit something and change their mind. This is, um, putting out a net. For municipal attorneys who submit to us their intent or their interest on general counsel representation. This is not for any type of retainer, it's not gonna cost us a dime to do this, so, um. If you have discussion, let it come now, please.
Uh, I would like to make a motion that we would put an RFP out for municipal attorney.
You have a motion by Commissioner Barron. Does that motion have support? I'll support that. Supported by Commissioner Peterson, now additional discussion, Commissioner View, you were getting ready to say something.
I'm always saying something, but.
Fine.
The scope of work to, to produce this RFP is time is money. And we did. At the, at that one meeting was pointed out that we wanted the way to the new administrator and I stand by what we said at the first time.
Very good.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
Uh, again, sometimes I, uh. Think a lot about things afterwards and I guess what I come up with is. One, it, it, it's not gonna cost the county a dime to do this. We're not hiring anybody, we are taking in ideas, applications, whatever, we're not hiring a single person. And there is no difference between doing it now. And waiting until there's a new administrator, will not change a thing, waiting for a new administrator. So that's, that's where I'm at with it now, after consideration.
You know. I thought we were just, it was on there, just to table it until the new administrator would get on like we said, so that's all I got.
Very good, sir.
One more comment.
Commissioner View.
Our. I don't know what you call it, prosecuting office, uh.
Prosecuting attorney.
The attorneys and our, um. Resources in the county reassured me at the last meeting. Uh, that they are very well capable with our insurance company to handle just about anything that could come forward right now. And at any given time, I brought up what I researched, that other departments in the county. Have attorneys that we can contact for conflict of interest things. Right off the bat, if we need to go beyond what our own internal legal team can do for us. To me, that's, that's plenty, and, and just to reiterate, time is money. If you spend time doing up something, work, office work, sending stuff out, reading it, reviewing it. That costs money and depending on what your hourly wage is, it can cost a lot.
I do believe the commission will continue to pay the prosecuting attorney six thousand dollars annually for. Some representation by that office on various issues. As someone who's attending to his fiduciary obligation, I want to make sure that we have general counsel for this board. That carries malpractice insurance that takes the extreme chance of liability. Away from the taxpayers of the county. I have said from the beginning, it is not a reflection on the competence level of Prosecutor Wickman or her staff, I find them to be competent. Dedicated, good lawyers, but the reason why I am. Have been pushing for this is because we need general counsel with. For all intent and purposes of malpractice or liability insurance to safeguard the people that we represent. We have a motion on the floor, uh, we have a second, is there any additional conversation, discussion?
Uh, Commissioner View, uh, felt that we were confident in what we have. But reality is, we don't know all circumstances that are coming and to have a, uh, additional party here, uh, for. Particular circumstance that may come into play where those others cannot fill the duty is, I think, good to have that on file for us. Thank you.
We, we may, we may never use this person, ever. But if something comes up. Where we need him, we won't have to go looking at that time.
So we have a motion on the floor, we have, uh, second to that. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed.
Present.
Okay, very good, that motion will pass. Next up is, uh, vets funding, okay, I wanted this put on here, um. I spoke with, uh, Oceana County Monday morning and I talked with their administration and I, uh. Had a very nice conversation and, and I have some concerns about this in the name of transparency, um. The, uh, administrator that county had indicated, Commissioner View, that you called and that you would discuss veterans' issues. And I think that's good, and when I said, who's the lawyer you hired, how much was he or she? She chuckled, what are you talking about? I said, it's on the front page of our paper. And then I heard the wind go out of that person, she has no concept of having a discussion about hiring a lawyer on behalf of Delta County. And in the name of transparency, I'm asking from clerk, I want clarification on this because I'm confused.
Well, you should be because the, the advice I got was from a committee. I, I, I don't know if it was the, uh. A MAC committee that we talked about veteran affairs and solar energy, which is not privy in, in the public context. And they were going to, when, when I brought up that we need to find out about this veterans' obligation from all the counties. And, and another person talked to me, they said they would give me the recommendations and they would talk to their attorney. And get back to me on where to go in a direction for funding. And this ruling on this eighteen, what is it, eighteen ninety-nine?
PA two fourteen of eighteen ninety-nine.
Yes, and they sent me the emails for Osha and a county. As the contact person, because that person was also a administrator in another county that didn't have veteran services. And she moved into this county where they have the, the tax for.
Tracy, yeah.
Yeah, right here, well, it's Jody Stincard. Alfred Coleman's and. Probably that, I probably don't have Tracy's thing in here, but.
Okay, that's fine. My, my confusion comes here, you, you said, I can't believe they did this, they hired a lawyer from us.
They. And, and attorneys, their, their attorney's opinion on which way to go and how to pursue this. They, they weren't giving me legal advice to the extent that I can call this attorney up and give me advice, they were checking with their attorneys. To be able to. Give me the right persons or information that I could continue moving forward with this.
So can we assume that they did not hire a lawyer for us?
I'm not gonna assume that because they must have talked to somebody and gave me the information.
Okay, we, we, this is where I, I'm having a harder time with this because I, we went on record saying that. There was a lawyer hired for us and when I mentioned that to her, she almost passed out on the phone, you could hear.
Well, I'll call her tomorrow and straighten her out to the extent that. She was the contact person, she was one of three contact persons that were given to me to, to, uh, do my research.
Okay, and verbatim, when I said, did you guys discuss a lawyer, she said no, so I need to, because there's.
Well, she wasn't the person that started it, Commissioner.
I, dear. I'm confused highly, okay, we, you, you, you stated it last Tuesday, the press printed it, that somebody.
Well, the press printed, I can't, I can't determine what the press printed, what I stated is, I, I. Pardon?
They said the same about your quote, we can't, you know. Um, I just want to make sure that the people of Oceana County are not expecting.
They, they weren't even in the original conversation, Commissioner, they weren't even in the original conversation. This, this, they, they were a third party to my conversation in the committee that I was involved with.
So do we or do we not have legal representation from Oceana County to?
I have a legal, I have a, an opinion.
Issued by whom, sir?
From the, from the, uh, administrator of the committee I was on. She emailed me, I'll, I'll forward you all the emails and you can make your own judgment.
Commissioners, anything else? Very good, there's nothing else, move. We'll move on. Your new business. The payment of bills.
I move repair bills.
Let me do my moment. I have examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders of the county treasurer to the claimants. For the amounts allowed. Our grant total of bills is three hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. And our commissioner expenses are three hundred and forty dollars and fifteen cents.
Okay.
Very, very good, Bob.
No, I'll move to.
Moved by Commissioner Barron. Or supported by Commissioner Mellner that we pay our bills, roll call, please. Sorry.
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
And Moya.
Yes.
Very good, this is unanimously, airport PFAS phase three.
Um, as. She would like to speak up.
Please go ahead.
Included in your board packet should be the, uh, copy of the grant, uh, there is a summary within the first couple of pages. Um, this is the third, as, as the grant says, phase three of our PFAS investigation. Uh, we'll be doing more soil borings, there'll be installing permanent monitoring wells. There will be more groundwater sampling, um, there will also be stormwater sampling, which I am actually qualified to do. So me doing the three, I've gotta do three, um, stormwater events. I'll save the county and the state about twelve thousand dollars, um, and then we will have some other supplementally. Supplemental sampling depending on the results of those stormwater samples. This grant is fully reimbursable by the state, so we do have to pay the initial two hundred and twenty-six thousand. For this sampling, but it is, it is fully reimbursable and the state is very good about, um, getting that money back to us after we paid it out.
Do we have money in the, in the budget for the airport tucked away for that?
Ashley and I worked with our, um, engineering firm to have that money in the budget at the start of the year, so yes.
Thank you. All right, do we need a motion on this?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mellner.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Barron, additional discussion, gentlemen. Commissioners. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That would pass, thank you. Out of county travel for UPACC.
We are requesting for out of county travel for the Commissioners to attend the Upper Peninsula Association of County Commissioners Spring Conference. Um, if you haven't already done so, I'd like to put out that, um, to sign up with Tracy for the early bird special, which ends May first.
We need a motion for out of county travel.
I'll make that's.
Moved by Commissioner Mellner.
Supporter.
Supported by Commissioner View, additional discussion. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that would pass, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Mattson, if you'd come up for this, please, uh, Parks Management, and then we'll be discussing about the county or RFP.
Uh, I'd like to start a moment about this, so I was told, um, by the Commissioners to look up the union contracts. And if we needed to, um, have this as a union position or not. So according to the union contract of the courthouse division, article forty-five, it was talking about contracting and subcontracting of work. And since that, um, it says no work shall be contracted out of. Or subcontracted if such contracting would result in a layoff. Therefore, we don't have any current parks members, it would not result into a layoff. Um, and we also have the right to come sub- subcontract work if there are not personnel that are capable of doing this work. Or the capacity and ability to perform such work. Um, so that is what I found, I also have a meeting with the union representative, Sue Cameron. Um, on April twelfth to discuss more depth about this.
Well, Commissioners, would any of you like to start with questions or comments? We'll start with you, Commissioner Peterson. Um, not at this point, Commissioner View.
Are we moving in a direction now to?
We're trying.
Well, I'm, I, I brought up something last time that, uh, was turned down because a commissioner said. We're not, we haven't decided what direction we're going, so I, I, I'm not interested in hearing any report until we have a direction we're moving in. So that all the energy and effort that we talk about is going towards that, not hypothetically before that. So can we determine a direction right now?
I think we have the information in front of us, so that's very possible, given the input from the commission.
What, what is the direction then?
That will be determined right now by this conversation. Um, we weren't aware of whether we could go forward with consideration to the, uh, private sector. Before, now we are, personally speaking, I would like to see us rely on our unions, but that's me, rest of you can, um, chime in.
Well, go ahead.
What, uh. I would like to see as the county does take this over. Uh, and Rory more or less said that it would be better for the county to take it over also. Uh, that way we're not paying, uh, private company thirty percent or whatever they want. Instead, we can take the thirty percent ourselves. So.
I agree.
I, I am all favor of going, uh, county taking it over.
Commissioner Barron.
Well, uh. I thank you, Ashley, for that information, that clarifies what we're looking for, that's, that's what we needed, it's, uh, we, there's a question that hadn't been answered. Thank you for that and, uh. Uh, uh, the, uh, Commissioner Mullner, the, uh, as far as, uh, the county gets to thirty percent, you gotta earn the thirty percent. So the, uh, they, uh, whether, whether the thirty percent's a figure and there's no guarantee it's going to be there. So whether public or private, the private, uh, goes for the thirty percent is the incentive to do the job that they do. So.
And.
We'll go ahead.
Any questions for Mr. Mattson, since he's standing up there, please, and he's gonna be the one who's integral in helping us with this.
I'm just very worried if you don't use the county and it's actually a business. Um, the, the agreement between the district and the county was because we're both units of government, it never was out to the private sector. Anybody taking it over is gonna realize the amount of extra hours and work and. It's either gonna be the owner, right, who steps up to the plate or they're gonna hire somebody, and I guess they're gonna hire somebody. So I see the labor, I think the labor with the county is gonna be somewhere around two hundred thousand, okay? And, uh, because it won't be as cheap as the district, but if it goes to the private sector. And they wanna compete with what we talk about, these eighteen dollar jobs or whatever and give benefits. I, what I'm afraid of is it'll be run, but at the end of the year, they're gonna be coming to you. And if you don't, to do projects, and if you don't have them, and will the private sector, and they can, I'm not saying they can't, but. Depending on, are they gonna hire grant writers and then, or be grant writers? And I think that's a lot to do with it too, this way you'd have a manager who can write grants, that grant then comes, there's no administration coming out of the grant. Because I can't imagine even a private sector writing grants, you can hire a lot of grant writers, but most of them, you know, minimum ten percent, just writing a grant. So, like, like John said, I, I, I really think if we want these parks to maintain where they are. And, uh, maybe improve a little bit, one thing Commissioner Johnson always stressed and Commissioner Revard too, is you can build it. But don't build it too big. Because if you do, with the limited income or when you run on hard times with the county, then what do you do? And you don't wanna start laying people off, you don't want stuff like that, so. You know, I, I know the public would, everybody who stays at Pioneer would like everything at Pioneer, right? Everybody who goes to Fuller would like everything there, but you guys offer a lot of things if you take in those two parks and campgrounds. They don't have to be right there, so that's another thing to consider, but. They don't have to be right there. So that's another thing to consider, but I'm I'm really nervous. About the private sector coming in here, making the money, and then all of a sudden, when you're not making a profit. I mean, if they walk out the door, what are you getting a lawsuit with Lauren and them trying to get money back? And I I don't know it. It's just a concern. So I agree with the union and I think uh a couple of the commissioners I talked to, I think the county can do this. Um, they just have to be, you know, penny wise and smart, run it a little more like a business than just a department. But if you go to the private sector. Um, I would just hate to see it fail five, ten years down the road.
So would I.
Well, I'm not, I'm not in disagreement with the the failure aspect of it. But um, we're we're under that same gun, make sure it doesn't fail here at the county because the track record. Of thirteen years ago was failure under the county jurisdiction.
But don't, and and I've said that to Ashley and it's going to be totally up to you guys, don't put it under an authority. Some authorities work and some don't, and it was under the thing of the authority. So county didn't have to worry about it, right? It wasn't you five. Or whoever's five. So the point comes to, it would be really nice if uh you had an ad hoc committee parks, I think like Commissioner View talked about. Seven members or whatever, two county board, and you sort of oversee it. But you or whoever sits here is ultimately responsible to the people, but not an authority.
But but also I'd like to, I mean, I agree with you that way.
Peterson was next.
Go ahead.
All right, Commissioner, you'll go ahead. He'll go after you.
All right, um.
I know in this, I sat down here. Three months ago or whatever, and this all came up. My thoughts were that I wanted to see it go to uh a private company. And. Listening to what's going on in in research and time to think about it. Uh, personally, I I think that bringing it into the county and ha- and having the county board. Is the way to go.
I. I wanted to make sure that that authority, not the authority, but the committee. Is well representative of of all the. People in the county, different the different districts, that that was my original thing. But it also is just a line item. Of the money coming in and going out in the county budget. So it cannot, well, say eventually it makes makes money. But the money would go back into the parks for improvements and everything like that. So it can't be absorbed in another area that we're hurting in or something. Parks and Recreation is what I'm looking at, that that money stays for.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mellner?
Uh, I guess if we can run an airport, we can sure run parks.
A little history, the airports did run the parks. And it didn't work.
I would like to um.
Well, well, let me give you a little history there, too, on that. The airports did run the parks, but I can tell you. That when I was on the, I'm on the airport board and we were told that they didn't have time to run the parks and it was pushed upon them to run it. And it was probably a low priority thing and and that's why it didn't work properly.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, John. No? All right, what I would like to say is I would like to learn from our past mistakes. We have good unions, we have good employees, and I don't believe that it was run by a union last time. Um, and I'm not belittling that person. He was probably set up with a lot of things and not backed up. So um, we have the opportunity to learn from the past, not repeat the past. So we would have the union, you know, it would be another union position, I guess. Um. Um, and then we would have uh some oversight. So what I'm getting. Correct me if I'm wrong. But I'm getting from most of you that you would rather see the county. Take a stab at running the parks as opposed to bid it out to the private sector. Mr. Peterson?
One of the things that um I was convert concerned about at the very beginning was that. Any profit from the parks would go into the general fund. And would be lost and spent elsewhere. So one of the things that we've talked about that makes me feel better about county running it itself is that the money. From the parks would go into its own account that would be earmarked to be used only at the in the parks.
Right, and the ability to do that, satisfying both you and Mr. View, yes?
Yep.
You had a kumbaya moment, gentlemen.
Oh.
All right. Anything else, please?
That's good. Um. I I I would, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we um encompass the parks as already. Talked about in the Personnel Committee.
I do. You've got to make that more user friendly. What do you mean?
Well, well, are are we send it back to the Personnel Committee to uh structure the uh? The running of the parks through the county and to the Finance Committee to verify the the cost to do that.
So your motion is to send. The issue of running the parks back to the Personnel Committee to establish a structure of how to run it. And to the Finance Committee regarding any costs associated with that. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but does that encompass your motion?
Well, I thought we did that already, but I I'm I'm asking for it to go back and we can just go there for five minutes and say, yep, this is what we did. And send it back to the commission because I don't know if it's proper to send it to the commission now on something we approved that we didn't have direction to approve.
Um, Professor Rocky, can you please read the motion? Because I I he lost me too.
Still green.
You're fine.
Would like, Commissioner, you could send the parks.
Issue.
Issue to Personnel Committee for Structure and Finance Committee for cause.
Does that that is, okay, we have.
That's basically, yes.
But but the. I think you need a motion to motion to have the county run the parks to start with before we send it on.
I think you're right. Could you resend your motion temporarily? So we got to have a motion to have the county run the parks. We'll get back to your motion. He got support. It's going to go, you know.
I I thought I said that in the beginning, but I might have been wrong. Okay, I'll I'll resend the motion and rephrase it exactly how I said it, but in the beginning, put. So the county will run the parks.
That's the motion. You have a second to that?
Second.
Second, okay, the motion is the good Delta County runs its parks. Any other additional discussion? All those in favor signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're running our own parks. Okay, now would you like to?
Re.
Reestablish his.
Send the participation to Personnel Committee for Structure and Finance Committee for Cause.
And that was seconded by Commissioner Mellner. All those additional discussion.
The only thing I would guess is that it would have to go to the Personnel Committee before it comes to the Finance Committee. Because we've got to figure out the financing off of their structure.
Agreed. But I mean.
I'll amend it to add that that section on it. So to go to the. Is it the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Um, unfortunately, um, receptive or accepting the retirement of Todd Tardif. Excellent employee, a request for lump sum payout to fill a road patrol position as well. Could we please get him a letter? And I would need a motion on this.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Mellner?
Yep.
All right, additional discussion. Todd, we will miss you. All those in favor signify by signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Very good. Airport uh fuel rack system safety shut off. Go ahead.
I went before the Finance Committee um to, I brought a quote for a fuel safety shut off. Um, it's it's a FAA requirement now. Um, we have not had any sort of uh. Spills or even close to it at our airport, but um this is one of their famous unfunded mandates. Um, so yeah, just permission to purchase this fuel rack system. I believe I have it in my budget. Um, I do have another quote coming. They're taking forever to get it to me, but the company that I. Um, the quote that I submitted already was the company that came at the lowest the last time I looked at purchasing this piece of equipment. So. I will, once I get the second quote, I'll I will wait for the second quote and I will do the lesser of the two.
Questions, gentlemen?
Yes, well, um, will we uh we'll have to wait until you get the second quote so we can make a motion to go forward, believe.
Um, I would, I would ask that you just approve the amount. Of the the one that I gave you because that in all likelihood, that's going to be the lesser of the two. Um, I'm not ordering anything until I get, and I'm going to order the the less of the lesser of the two quotes. So it's going to be that amount or less.
Okay, well, then I'll make that motion.
Moved by Commissioner Barron.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson to authorize uh airport administration to uh purchase the lesser of the two. All those additional discussion. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I I opposed. That would pass. Thank you. Okay, a part-time district court clerk position uh budgeting.
On March seventh, the commissioners were presented with a request for a part-time position in the District Court. I was directed by Commissioner Chair to look into this request. We had several personnel and finance meetings concerning this agenda item as well as discussions with the District Court Union Chapter. The Personnel Committee is requesting that the commission approve of a new position within District Court that will be a non-union part-time clerk.
So you budgeted position?
So it's a two-part. I can, it's a two-part that you have to approve the position and then we'll approve the funding. Um, so once the commission decides on the um new position, it will be determined in the Personnel Committee. And they will develop a job description. The agenda item also overlaps Agenda Item Eight on today's agenda. The Finance Committee recommends all non-union, non-grant. Part-time employees receive a range of sixteen to eighteen dollars per hour. The wage is determined by the department head based on experience level of the applicant.
Okay, that's.
Two-parter.
Let's, oh, cool. So can we vote on one or could we have to put them in uh two installments?
I would do.
All right, very good. So passage of number seven, the part-time district court clerk position budgeting. Uh, I would need a motion to create that position.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner View, supported by Commissioner Mellner. Additional discussion. All those in favor of creating that position, part-time position signify by saying.
Well, I I'd like to make one comment on that.
Yes, sir.
Um. Me and Commissioner Mellner were in all that discussion and the document, the reason we're doing this is. Some of the people in that department were getting. Uh, all their comp time, eighty hours comp time, and then then they were getting two hundred and some hours. Um, additional pay, I mean, overtime, overtime. So it warrant. Instead of paying overtime at time and a half. To to get a a part-time person in there to fill the gap and be more efficient that way. And that person was getting burnt out, too, and the courts needed it. So that I'm just giving you an explanation why we're approving it.
Well, and I'll add to that. It came before the Finance Committee also, and that was uh, was it uh? District Court Administrator Jean Healy uh to that, uh they're in a. Uh, very heavy overload situation, which is not not good. I mean, unfortunately, it's reflective of uh. Issues in our community that are not positive. So uh they they definitely need the help. And uh, uh, what will hap- what's been happening is you people are just putting in too much and they're just leaving. So this is, this hopefully will help that s- situation. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That item passes unanimously. Okay, number eight would be the review of part-time hourly wages and benefits as stated by our interim administrator. Uh, between sixteen and eighteen dollars an hour and that amount would be determined by the department head.
That's, yes, that that again, that was before uh Commissioner Peterson and I had Finance Committee and. Uh. We came up with the range and and gave the discretion or or asking for the discretion be with the department heads. Instead of uh locking something in. One size fits all, let the department heads determine where that should be.
We have a motion for passage.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron, support, supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That would pass and to our part-time employees who have been. Working uh with less wages. Thank you very much for your dedication. Delta, you will can him, pardon me?
And they don't get benefits either.
I think when you brought it up, Nancy, it did made the board aware of it. And so, I mean, you know, we value your word. Thank you. Um, Delta County Parks, Rory, you want to pop back up here? Delta County. Parks, employees, wages and benefits.
I don't think we're ready for that right now.
Well, I.
Well, that all depends. I think we're just batting around ideas.
Well, it's, I I think we've made the decision to move it to the uh to the county level. And we're going to be moving to the Personnel Committee and then to the Finance Committee. I think that's where the discussion.
Committee already approved something, but it was premature, which you just did. Maybe I'll have to go back on YouTube, too. Is once it goes to personnel, right, and you guys will decide the jobs or how many there's going to be in some, then it should go back.
Right.
Because right now, you know.
I mean, we know what's going on.
Say four, you don't know what to do.
Yeah.
So you come forward to the board with some information, but this was.
Well, we worked heavy and hard on it uh with with the recommendations that were given by the the park people. And we just weren't ready to give it tonight because we didn't have a direction. Now we have a direction. I'd like to officially have it. Be brought back to the board through the proper procedure. That's all I'm asking for.
Sure. You need a motion for that or do we, we already moved? All right, very good then. All right, well, thank you. That's nice. Okay. Next, number ten, Zoom recommendations.
The Finance Committee reviewed the request of the commissioners for the stipend for our I T director. Um, they discussed several options for remedy this request. In conclusion, the Finance Committee recommends that Zoom is eliminated as an option for the commissioners' meetings. The county currently provides reasonable auxiliary aids and services for the hearing impaired. Into individuals with disabilities at the meeting and hearings upon reasonable notice to the Delta, the county of. Sorry, Tony of Delta. Individuals with disabilities requiring services should contact the. County of Delta eighty-eight coordinator, Jack Smith, and his phone number is at nine oh six seven eight nine five one eight nine. For these.
Brandon, you want to pop up again one more time?
Good.
You are, uh, all employees are valued. You're a very valued employee and you're, is this your recommendation that we scuttle this?
Yes.
All right, and I mean, we still will be able to offer live streaming on YouTube or?
Yeah, we'll still do a live livestream on on YouTube.
All right, so um. Commissioners, thanks. I just wanted.
One thing is brought up at the uh. Finance Committee meetings that. Uh, YouTube is going to be streaming this and that uh we could put the phone number that would. Come right to Ashley here for someone who would want to speak under the public comments. And that should work, I think, fairly well. Yeah, the thought is if if somebody. Spoke with our eighty-eight coordinator and we could make arrangements, we could do that, but for regular public comment, that's what the podium's for.
We would have to adapt a policy then, wouldn't we, for something like that to where somebody who was hypothetically disabled?
No, we we already have it.
All right, very good.
Yeah, we're we're all set.
All right, very good. Then they're covered. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, gentlemen.
I I would like to read a little comment that was sent to me and then multiple people kind of uh supported uh. Continuing with Zoom, but this says Zoom meetings can help the board stay A D A compliant. It offers closed caption for those with hearing problems. I I don't know if that's true or not, Brandon, you let me know. There are other tools to provide, um, you'll need other tools to provide phone calls. You will need access to a multi-line phone system. With T D D capabilities or T Y Y for the blind. Just a sus- suggestion. They said for my arguments to keep Zoom. So I'm I'm suggesting it, Brandon, are is this person wrong? And I've had other people tell me the same thing.
You don't have to provide Zoom or YouTube.
I'm not, I'm not saying that we have to. I'm I'm not asking if we have to. I'm asking, is this person?
If if you do provide some kind of phone-in service, then you will have to provide that.
That's the person that wants to utilize that's blind and can't hear, or do we provide it for them?
They have it on their end. We don't provide their end.
So this this will restrict them, people, from being able to participate if 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 what this person is saying is true.
I I don't, I don't know for sure, but I I know a blind person can't read closed captioning, so. I I don't know. That doesn't get through.
No, I I don't either. I'm just, I'm just giving you uh the information that was forwarded to me as an argument for. Maybe it is only a few people or maybe it's a lot that he's speaking out that that. Are interested in keeping the Zoom uh format. And 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 I was at the the meeting why Zoom is. Is.
I'd like to. Right now, I'd like to let him sit down because he's clearly not, I mean, we can have this discussion.
Well, no, I I'm not.
If you want to forward me what they said, we can look in and I can talk to Jack and.
Okay, okay, all right. I mean, because I don't know either.
You're not going to find anybody on this board that has more passion. You're not going to find anybody on this board that has more passion and will advocate harder, you can have a seat, Brandon. For somebody with a visual impairment than myself. Um, and I've been doing it for twenty-five years and I'm not gonna, not prepared to yank the rug out from anybody.
That, that's not the argument.
I totally understand you, I'm just, you know, giving you my two cents on it, um.
I appreciate that.
We have a recommendation from our IT Coordinator. Anybody else, please?
No, it's from the Finance Committee.
It's also from our IT person.
Well, I'll make the motion to eliminate Zoom.
You have a motion by Commissioner Barron. Does anybody else wish to second that? Or discussion even?
I'll support it for discussion.
For discussion, okay, so we got a motion and, uh, second for discussion, so begin with the discussion.
Okay. By me?
Sir.
Um. So, like Commissioner Barron said in the. In the, uh. Finance Committee meeting and, and was talked about was to give the ability for people to call in. To, to use, uh, YouTube, not Zoom, um, and, uh, give the people, uh, the ability to call in. Um. I guess, I guess what I would like to see is, and I hate to do this because I hate tabling things. But I guess what I'd like to see is. What we've got to do. To make it so that people can call in with the processes, uh, the, the visual impaired or the hearing impaired, I believe. They've already got their stuff set up in their house. So that they can function. Um, with their disabilities. Uh. Big thing is, is for, for them to call in and, and, uh, be able to talk to us. Uh, that's just my thoughts, um. I know some people. Just can't get here. Um. And I have got, people ask me to keep Zoom and I had people tell me to get rid of it, that we don't need it. Uh, both ways, so I guess like I said, my. What I would like to do is I, and, and it would require. Changing our, our, uh, motions around, but I'd like to just see what, what the.
If, anybody, we have a motion on the floor to scuttle Zoom in, in a second, and we are discussing this, um. Would it be sufficient to you guys if we could stream this? On YouTube and provide an opportunity for someone to call in. Who is disabled, the visually impaired, the auditorily impaired. I think you have to really mention the ambulatorily impaired too, um. I know somebody out there, um. Who listens quite frequently, they can't stand me, but they have the right to comment as much as they need to. And if this person can't get in, I do not wish to stifle her voice, and so if we can offer a. Ha, a phone line so she can cuss me out, so be it, but I mean, you know, let, let's do that for, for our disabled community. Please.
So on our agenda on the last page, that's what this whole last paragraph is, is to provide. ADA compliance. For people that can't make it to our meetings. I guess I'm, I, it's already set up.
It's already there.
It's already there, this has been something that's in motion.
Well, can you explain how it works for them now?
You just have to call up Jack. And say, I want to participate in the meeting, but I have a disability of whatever, and then he sets it up so they're able to participate.
He's our ADA.
Yes, they just have to ask for re, give a reasonable notice, so I guess the wheel, I, I'm confused on.
You guys is tapping, you frustrated.
Why we have to look at it again, because we've already have.
Well, it wasn't that we're looking at it, we're looking at. Getting rid of Zoom, which has been an avenue for these people. Somewhat. And maybe knowing exactly how our ADA compliance. Works. Might. Further convince me that we do have that avenue that they're asking about.
She just explained it.
Yeah, but it doesn't tell me how it's done.
You could, she just said.
Well, it depends on what disability they have that we have to accommodate.
Yeah, but what do we have in the county that'll, that'll service that?
What's his name?
We, they just call and then Jack Smith, so that would be.
His number.
His number is seven eight nine. Five one eight nine.
So we have an ADA.
And it's written on the bottom.
We have coordinator, we have a number, somebody with a disability, City of Eskenaba just went through this and they, they just pulled the, the, the plug on Zoom. And they're, they're on YouTube. Um, so we have something for people to watch and we have an avenue. For somebody who is disabled, whether it's visual, auditory, ambulatory. Whatever the, I don't want to leave anybody out.
But, but is that for at home or at the meeting?
That's for people at home to call in.
Okay.
And to.
Set up, yeah, to participate within the meeting through public comment. On agenda items or just public comment.
I'm telling you as an advocate for the visually impaired, this would satisfy me and I'm not easily satisfied when it comes to.
No, I, I agree, I, I'm telling you as somebody that. Takes a small issue that only affects one or two people. Being in, in the pos, profession I'm in. I take it seriously all the way, even though it doesn't affect everybody else, I need to. Feel that this person is well listened to and taken care of.
Leaving anybody behind, Commissioner, that's a good thing.
Well, I'm saying, you know, even though, to me, it may be insignificant, to them, it's super important and I just want to make sure that we're not leaving anybody behind.
I don't believe we are with this, I think with an. Coordinator and an opportunity for people to call in and say, hey, I want to call in and address this board on this item.
Oh, I, I will, I will check that out myself, but until I know for sure. Just for sure, I, I, I just don't want to support something that takes away something without knowing for sure.
Understood, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second, do you want to table this or do you, sir?
Oh. We already have this, it's been in effect for a long time, I, uh, it, the fact that Zoom will be gone, we already have, uh. Coverage for that, uh, 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 excuse me, Zoom would be gone, would be gone if we vote this and we have YouTube, that it would be. Uh, something that would be, I believe, that information on our website, that's available, to ma, to make, let them know that for the ADA, um. Those that need that. To get a hold of this so they can take care of it, the information is there, it's not, it, it's not been hidden, it's been there, it, it isn't just on our, our, uh. Our agenda item, it's here, so we, we're, we're having a redundancy having Zoom and, and, uh, YouTube at the same time.
Okay, additional discussion before we vote.
I, uh, I'll just say that. It, it, like you said, we've had this on here. And we do take care of the, the disabled through this. Um. And I, I, I'm, don't see where we need to, uh. Need to. Zoom is just another. Another, uh. Thing that's cr- causing us to have our, our IT guy here, Mr. Melner, we haven't heard from you anything?
Uh. I'm kind of confused because, uh, Commissioner Peterson wanted to table it, now he's. In agreement with it.
Maybe somebody changed his mind, Brandon.
Yeah.
I, I suggested table it until I, it was explained to me about the procedure that we have in place.
He, who, who said?
Baron moved, Peterson seconds for discussion. So, any other discussion, gentlemen, before we vote? Very good, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Melner.
No.
You.
No.
Uh. Barron.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
And Moyle.
Yes.
Alright, very good. Now, uh, Eskenaba, excuse me, Eskenaba Community Garden approval for the greenhouse, you have supporting information, please.
Go ahead, yes.
The Building and Grounds Committee recommends the placement of the greenhouse on the community garden property. And MSU, MSU Extension is to comply with Eskenaba permitting and other applicable regulations.
I have some, sure, I think it's a wonderful idea. I have some concerns right off the start, but, um. I'd like to hear from anybody on the commission as to. I think the whole community garden thing's excellent.
It's, well, well, me and John on that committee, we, we heard the whole presentation, it was, um. Quite nice, um. It's being donated from the junior high school. Uh. No cost to the county. No expense to the county, we made that clear. The only thing we didn't make clear is they have to take ownership of that. Building. And they're responsible for the building and the removal if it's gets to a state of disrepair.
That was my question, a decommissioning process, I mean, right now, the thing's going to be in great shape. Hypothetically, twelve years from now, it could be an ill.
Right.
And so is there a document existing that would mandate? Compliance with this?
I, I, I think, uh, we could have one written up that would, uh, follow all in procedures that, uh, uh. Personnel or Building and Grounds Committee recommended.
I like where you're going with no cost to the county, and I, I really respect.
Well, that was, that, that was talked about there, I, I just, it, it's just not into the actual summary.
Sure, um. Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, I, I have a few questions on this, um. I'd like to know how big the greenhouse is to start.
Ten by twelve, I think, less than ten by twelve, it, it's not big.
Massive thing, yeah, okay, so. Who's going to use it?
Community.
Community gardeners are all good. What they, what they're getting it for is so they can start planting, putting plants in there and getting things started. Before they can put them in the grow.
I, I understand that, I, uh, I do a little bit of gardening myself. And I started all my plants early from seeds, I grew, I grew everything right, right from the ground up. Uh. I've put up a. Greenhouse at my place, ten by twelve. And filled it myself. So it's a ten by twelve greenhouse is not going to serve too many people. Um. I, I grow. I probably start approximately two hundred. Seeds from, from, start at scratch.
You asking how it's going to be regulated, how would we be determined who would give what space?
Exactly, like I said, I. Most, most people that. Put in any size garden at all. Would use that whole greenhouse just for one person. Well, I don't know how you would say, okay, you can have it this year, you can have it next year, you've got this much space. Um.
I, I'd like to comment on that. With the presentation, it, it's, it's just a starter thing. For. What, was it a gardening group or something, Ashley, do you remember, or John?
ISD Builders put together this, uh, greenhouse and then they donated it, I believe it was to like a science class. For a project.
No, but, but, but the actual use of it, it, it probably will be regulated by this lady and this, and her group.
Like the community gardens, there's only so much land and it's divvied up.
Right, so it would be regulated.
To regulate it, but they, they were just requesting to put it on our property. They were going to regulate and take care of everything, the only part is the decommissioning, we did not discuss that.
No, and that's.
Motion for it.
Right, right, but the, the, the biggest thing too is. This, this property. Can't have anything else built on it, I didn't know it was county property, if you're familiar where the community garden is heading out south on, uh, M, uh. Thirty-five there on the left-hand side.
Who will insure this, uh, this, this building or this greenhouse?
Well, they already got beehives there, they already got a storage shed there, so I, I imagine that there's. We didn't think of that part, but there must be something going on with, we don't insure, it's no cost to us. You mean liability?
Well, you talk about no cost, but there's, um. In this world that we're litigious, it's called liability.
Well, it must be covered under some policy of county property.
We would hope, we, we need not, it, it, it isn't, we don't say it must, we, we need to know.
I, I, I support, I like this idea, I think it's a great community thing and I'm not not supporting it, but I, um. We need to, uh, I, I think have something written up that will hold the county.
Well, do we support, do we have insurance, a, a liability on that property now being used by the community, so?
There's already a small shed on it already, so.
Beehives.
I, I had no idea we had beehives. They're a wonderful thing. So is, is the.
Not ours.
Not, not the property, but the liability, do we have liability?
This is our property.
Okay, so we.
It's our plan.
Yeah. We don't own. No, because we don't own it.
Can buildings and grounds. Meet with these people and, and get some of these questions answered, so we can all move forward together on it as opposed to a fragmented.
Yeah, but could you give us the, the questions you'd like us to?
Question would be, or, I would like to see a document that would, um, hold the county harmless for the decommissioning of the entire structure. Is that possible?
Of course.
And then, um. Liability is huge, because if you, you're talking about a glass rupture and God forbid a couple. No, I don't even want to go there.
I, I would also, I would also like to know. Who's going to be using it and who's going to be deciding who uses it?
Well, whoever the MSUE contact person is, I think.
Who cares?
It would be the, the, the master gardener.
Yeah, does master gardener program?
Gardeners.
I mean, it's not going to be the outside, anyone going there, you know, unless they bust in or something, it'll be regulated by, by this group.
Right, it's part of their programs.
That's fine, can you?
That's what they would be using it for.
Simply ask who's going to administrate the use of the greenhouse. And then we can have buildings and grounds meet with them and get back to us. And that can be done at your leisure as soon as you'd like.
Okay, yeah.
Um, I think this is a good thing, I just would like a little bit more information and I'm looking forward to supporting this into a reality. Um, update on the Airport Advisory Board Resolution regarding the manager compensation.
Is, is Andrea still on Zoom?
A lot, yeah, she is.
Yeah, I'm still here.
Hi Andrea.
Hi.
Um. You, you and I had talked. And I was wondering, um, are you okay with, uh. Uh, tabling this until the airport board can meet and then come back?
Yeah, that's fine, it was my under, under my impression, it had to go back before finance anyway.
Right, right, so I, we, we're going to have a Finance Committee coming up soon, we're going to have an airport board on Monday. So I'd like to meet with you on Monday, you know, the board on Monday and talk about this and then bring it back to the Finance Committee. You're, you're good with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Item next is the contract of our interim administrator. Um, do we need a motion to table, I need a motion to table, uh.
Yes, I, I would like to make a motion to table this.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner Barron to table item number twelve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that would pass unanimously now, item thirteen is the contract. For interim administrator. Review.
Yes, I, I would like to move that we go in a close. Session to consider a written legal memorandum. From our council. On the, uh. Point of laws involving the contract and employment that is put before us. Under section fifteen point two six eight. AH of the Open Meetings Act.
Prosecutor Rocky, is that permissible?
It is. Have a written memorandum from our.
I do.
Here.
So you can go into executive session to. To discuss that.
That comes from our prosecutor?
Yes.
Alright, we have, uh, it's your motion?
I, that's my motion.
We have a motion to go into executive session to discuss this. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll support it.
So we have a motion in support, additional discussion? Alright, roll, roll call, please.
Melner.
Yes.
You.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
And Moyle.
Yes. Very good, uh, folks, we're going to have to ask you to step out of the room.
Oh, no, we can go into that.
Yeah, oh, never mind, you can sit and be comfy.
Too many.
Just regard.
Ladies and gentlemen, the meeting of the Delta County Commissioners will come to order. I need a motion.
We're missing a couple of people.
Have a straggler or two.
Everybody gets it.
I need a motion, please, to come out of closed session. So moved by Commissioner Barron. Support. Supported by Commissioner Peterson. Roll call, please. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. We went into closed session to review a written opinion by legal counsel. No decisions were made. We are now back into the regular session. Talking item number thirteen on the contract or of our interim administrator. What is the board's pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize Ashley Young to perform the additional services of the administrator with the additional compensation of three hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-two cents per day.
Okay, so her. You have a motion on that? Do we have any support? I'll support. We have a motion and support additional discussion, Commissioners. Commissioner View?
I stand by it. I've talked over the last six years.
I think you're off. I think you're up in Mike's office.
Sorry. I stand by everything I presented in the last six weeks and disagree with with the amount. I I feel she's worth, the position's worth a stipend, but not a full pay. And that's my position.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right, roll call, please.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That issue is settled. All right, very good. We have a general public comment. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
We. In there, I would like to make another motion.
I do apologize.
Because we have a grant situation. We have to have an administrator for that. I I make a motion that Ashley Young has be our grant administrator and signatory on grants.
We have a motion, support, support, additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
All right, good, very good. That passes. Now I apologize. Now it is time for general public comment. You have three minutes to address the board. Thank you.
Get my timer up. Hi, Christine Peppin from Escanaba. Just some comments on tonight's board meeting. With regard to the parks, can't believe I'm saying this, but I agree with Rory Mattson on that one. It should stay in the county. It was in the past. The county took care of it in the past. And in my view, what had happened was they were not given the money to do the upgrades. They were not given the finances they needed to have those parks running more efficiently. That can be done, and it needs to stay in the county, and I'm glad to vote voted that way. With regard to the bulletproof glass that the sheriff is talking about, they have been asking for additional security in that courthouse for more than a decade since I was working there. And I know in the prosecutor's office, we had bulletproof glass and in fact, a bulletproof wall installed. And our local contractor, I believe it was Ness Contracting, did the work. I asked that this board, please consider hiring local contractors. This is Delta County. Let's try to keep the work here in Delta County. Don't bring somebody from downstate or elsewhere to do work that our contractors can do here, especially when it's our tax dollars paying for it. The RFP attorney, back on that again, I don't know what your big concern is at this point. You have a prosecuting attorney. My understanding is if you get, I mean, if you, the county hires a municipal attorney and you decide to take a case to trial and we lose that trial, then the county is responsible for any damages as well as attorney fees for both parties. And that's not county insurance. That's the counties on the hook for it. You have attorneys at your disposal now. You have the prosecuting attorney who's right across the hall. And you don't run the risk of it coming out of county coffers instead of the county insurance coffers. I really am, I have more concerns about what you guys are so worried about. And finally, when we come in here, we may all have our own political views. I understand that I have mine, you have yours. We're all welcome to them. But I don't appreciate hearing Commissioners up here making cracks like, oh, Fauci's flu fiasco. That's not, that's inappropriate, and it's not necessary at these meetings. Let's stick to the business and keep your political ideas out of it, please. Thank you.
Thank you. General public comment, please. Anybody for general public comment?
Hello. Hi, I'm Christiana Reynolds, and I live in Escanaba. Um, I just wanted to touch on the decision to get rid of Zoom. I am so disappointed with that decision. I think it's really, really short sighted. Um, I know you guys were concerned about creating systems that you won't have to change, right? There was, there was talk in there like Commissioner Peterson, I know you wanted to create things that are long-lived. Zoom and these kinds of platforms are a lot better to use, and it's easier for people to engage. It is not a good plan to stream it on YouTube and then ask people to call some, some guy on the paper. Um, and then I, I don't know, I guess, take a number or it's like a waiting room where you have to hear the elevator music. Like, that's not, that's not a good plan. Um, also, when we think to the future, when we think about the younger people in the community, and I know a lot of you guys are forward-thinking and you want to keep young people in Delta County. You want to engage with young people in Delta County. Killing Zoom, that was very short sighted. That's how young people engage. Okay, like, it, it just felt like you guys made that decision without really thinking about the younger generation and what you can do to better serve them. Um, and everyone up here was talking about ADA, and I'm so proud of us for making sure that we are ADA compliant. But I beg you to not do the bare minimum. Okay, just because we are ADA compliant does not mean we are adequately serving all the constituents and their needs. People without disabilities should still have access to these meetings in, in a fair and easy to use way. I know I have a minute left, but I think I made my point. I really hope you guys discuss this again. Commissioner Moyle, you said that Commissioners change their minds. I am asking you guys to change your minds. It's something really simple. Just bring it back. We just used it in the meeting. It was kind of silly. We like voted it away, and then like Andrea was on this, was on Zoom. So I feel like even in this meeting, the value of the platform was displayed. So again, we should bring it back so that we can have systems that last a long time. So thank you.
Thank you. General public comment, please. General public comment.
Hi, I'm Ann Truitt, Gladstone resident. Um, I just want to point out the average age of Delta County is seventy-five, seventy, forty-seven point five years old. That's me. I have a birthday in December. I'm in support of removing Zoom. Brandon can attest that five times I was kicked off. I was not the only person that was kicked off tonight. We had to dial in multiple times. We couldn't hear. There was interference with people talking over the feed. Um, we do have an ADA coordinator who can provide individualized services based on the need, based on the accommodation that they require. And I think as far as cost and Brandon having to sit here, YouTube can be accessed remotely and programmed remotely and to be more of an independent. And the ADA coordinator is there. If you want to make a statement, he can set it up so you can be here or you can provide a written statement to be read on your behalf. So I'm in favor of getting rid of Zoom. It's a pain just tonight. Using it was five times kicked off. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, very good. General public comment, please. Anybody wishing to address the board, general public comment. Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name is Gary Gustafson. Um, I'd like to comment about Zoom. Whatever platform you decide to use, it is discriminatory to make people with disabilities come and ask special permission to have the same access as anybody else. So if you're going to provide a platform, which I believe you really should, and I think that's definitely in the community's best interest, you need to, no matter what you're doing, anytime you're talking about accessibility with handicap issues, special permission is not okay. That is discriminatory. You're treating them differently than the rest of the community. And unless it's a very rare disability that's not normally thought of, then it needs to be addressed appropriately and prior to you getting any one of these platforms fully established or voted on. So I just really want to. So I just really want to make sure that this county understands that requiring special permission for access is a barrier to access, and that's not okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. General public comment, please. General public comment. Those wishing to address the board, three minutes. Welcome.
Good evening, Bonnie Hakala. Well, I'm another young person asking for you to keep Zoom because I love Zoom. It's easy to use. And if the person that's running it mutes everybody right away, then there's usually no problem with background, background noise. You did use it twice tonight. Came in really handy for you. You didn't have to try and call somebody on the phone and put it on the speaker like this, which we saw exhibited with Cory, right? And so I've asked before and support using Zoom. I believe you said it was two hundred dollars a year. That's pretty cheap. Even if you need to have an AT person here, I think probably your AT person knows how to use that, and it should be pretty easy for them. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Comment, please. Anybody commenting to the board? You have three minutes.
Evening. Evening. I'm Josiah Lawrence. I'm from Escanaba. My mother has a, has a cellphone. She does not have a landline. She doesn't have a computer. Neither does my dad, and neither do many of my friends. By cutting off Zoom, we eliminate the call-in factor. Many people who watch it on YouTube, if they only have that one device to watch it on, cannot also call in without turning off the live stream or the feed to hear what officials have to say. And I believe that eradicating YouTube, I mean Zoom, and focusing more on the YouTube side of it would cut off accessibility for many people, not only for people without disabilities, but for people to actively take part in politics.
Thank you. General public comment, please. General public comment, please.
Hi, good evening. Kelly Van Canhove in City of Escanaba. Um, I would like this commission to consider it to be, um, in the best interest of the yourselves and of the public. If department head updates were kept to five to ten minutes. Um, over the last few meetings, Mr. Mattson has spent upwards of thirty-plus minutes on department head updates reacting to critiques by the public. Um, if there's a lot to discuss under the department head update, I would kindly suggest that there is a written review of what is to be discussed and for it to be put into the agenda packet. These meetings are long enough, but having department heads, um, run over thirty minutes, um, it is very difficult for some of us to sit through. Thank you.
Thank you. General public comment, please.
My name is Sandy Sobe from Ford River, and I just have a couple of things. Um, I'm confused of how that phone-in, um, deal is going to work with the Zoom, with getting rid of Zoom too. Like, is there going to be like a landline phone here or something that people can call in? I'm not sure how that's going to work. And also, you wouldn't be able to have your airport, um, person be able to talk. And I also want to touch on, um, from speaking to people in the community, a lot of people are getting frustrated that Commissioner View does all of this research and checking on everything, and everything that he does is shot down. Everybody that, everybody that comes here already has their mind made up of how they're going to vote. So it just seems silly to even have the meetings because everybody's got their mind made up. And like I said last time, there is no compromise from anybody. And then the other thing I'd like to say is, um, there was a lot of talk about strategic planning tonight. And I just want to say that, um, firing Emily was not very strategic planning. And I think we'd all like to see how we are saving a hundred thousand dollars.
General public comment, please. You have three minutes to address the board. Please.
Evening commissioners. Mr. Melner and Mr. View. A man is measured by character he displays every day, not just when he thinks people are watching. And people run for public office for two reasons, to do something or to be something. You two are missing the point on both categories. Both of you play to the crowds and fail to act in the best interests of the community. You follow three people who have lost in the November elections blindly. Losing is part of a game, one except the possibility of losing when you lace on the spikes. In an election, it is the people who choose, it is the people who choose who runs the community. And everyone else needs to be there to accept the result and respect the voice of the people. If you lose an election, people spoke and said they didn't want you. Punishing the community is something that continually happens. Okay, punishing the community gets to a point where people who are in politics because they want to be someone, they take it as a personal insult when they're defeated. And they punish the community by doing such things as obstructing the progress by any means necessary, asking inane questions and so forth. I'm inclined to give, I'm inclined to give you, Mr. View and Melner, benefit of the doubt and assume you're unaware of the actions of the losers in the election. In addition to transparent obstruction in all government functions, these people have orchestrated in their online assault on both winners and supporters. They trump up unsubstantiated allegations, and they go so far as to encourage outright attacks on the wives and children of their opponents and those who support them. Not intimidated by these attacks. You can try to hurt me any way you want. I will not back off. If you have a problem, gentlemen, tell your followers, mess with me, not with my things, and certainly not with my family. That statement should lay it out for you, you realize that your character will be measured now that there's no question that you know of those tactics.
Yes, sir. General public comment, please. General public comment. Three minutes to address the board. General public comment going once. General public comment. Yes, please.
Lauren Wickman, Escanaba. Um, I'm here as a public, uh, public citizen at this point. Um, and I would ask the board to look over MMRMA uh, before making any hasty decisions about hiring a civil attorney. Ms. Peppin hit the nail right on the head. By putting our, hiring somebody to take over,
Keep going, alright.
Take over what has been deemed as frivolous lawsuits, it puts the county's insurance in jeopardy. And having dealt with federal lawsuits in the past, if you go past the point of a settlement resolution, hypothetically, say you could settle a case for fifty thousand. You say no, you hire your own attorney. At that point, you start incurring the costs. The cost of that attorney, the cost of litigation. You go to trial. So you lose. You incur not only the cost of that litigation for yourself, the cost of litigation for the opposing party, and any settlement that might come from that. It does not come from the insurance that would come right out of the county coffers. I have a significant concern what that money could look like after dealing with my own lawsuits and the number that I saw from opposing counsel, what they would have charged if we had not settled the case when we did. Also looking at MMRMA, they are not a private insurance company. Please ask some questions about what MMRMA does for the county. They are owned and run by the members. That would include this county. They, their interest is our interest. They have no interest other than protecting this county from civil liability instances. The other mention related to malpractice insurance, that only comes into play when the attorney screws up. Does not cover just a loss. The attorney must have made some sort of fatal error that caused that loss. And so it's not something that can necessarily be relied on to then cover what might have to come out of the county coffers. Thank you.
Thank you. General public comment, please. General public comment.
Hi, Chris DeSalvo, Escanaba City. Couple things. Um, Mr. Melner and Mr. View were elected to their office too. All five. And we thank you for bringing some of the information to light for everybody to look at and discuss before making their decisions that they've already made. It's just a little bit of a here that goes on, but we've all caught on to it. Another thing, the Zoom and YouTube, both were visible when Emily was administrator. She so Brandon would be here. He doesn't want to be here, and he doesn't have to be here. And if you keep him both, you don't have to have anything change. Um, probably more, but a lot of it was covered. Thanks.
Thank you. General public comment, please. General public comment. Thank you, sir.
Hello, Liam, uh, from Escanaba. And I'd like to, you know, thank, uh, View and Melner, uh, for, from the youth of Escanaba, or like Delta County as a whole, that, uh, we have a few politicians are local and that actually care about the community. You know, that's cool. I I personally feel like our congressman doesn't even care, but, you know, thank you too for caring, though. Thanks so much.
General public comment, please. General public comment. One more call, please. General public comment. Last call for general public comment in the audience. Do we have anybody on Zoom who wishes general public comment? One last call for general public comment on Zoom. Right period. For general public comment is over. Commissioners' concerns. Commissioner Peterson.
Um, I'll pass.
Mr. View.
Uh, I, a couple of comments. I, I do my homework the way I feel I should as a commissioner. Everybody knows what I support, what I don't support. I never hide anything. I get ornery sometimes and trying to force what I think is best for for the constituents. I do not play to the crowd. I play to the facts. I do not have an online presence or very minimal digital footprint. I do not go online. I do not participate in anything online just for the, the fact that it steers up trouble. I steer up enough trouble sitting here, and I do not need to do it online. I support Zoom a hundred percent. And I will continue supporting it as much as we can if we can get it, whatever, wherever, whatever way it goes. I think Zoom is basically a money issue more than a issue for the people that use it. I was at a meeting, uh, a MAC meeting, and I recorded the event on counties handling the solar problem. It was, I was very impressed. I learned a lot about it, and I sent the recording to Commissioner Barron. I I don't know. Did you receive that, Commissioner Barron? Not, okay, well, I I emailed it, so you show, shows you how good my email is. But I wanted to, I'll see if I can make a copy of it. I would, I'd like to give it to all the commissioners in case something comes up in the county. I think it'll give us a good insight on the, on the solar stuff. The hundred dollar, hundred thousand dollar savings. I have not looked at a budget. I have not seen an audit. I have not seen any capital improvement plans. I've been trying to save money by what I do here. And if we saved a hundred thousand dollars, I think we should probably put on the agenda a finance committee meeting to see if fifty thousand of that hundred thousand can be earmarked for the veteran service officers. If we're going to save money, I'd like to see some spent there while we review what needs to be done for the veteran service officer and that department. I, I've talked to that Dave on the phone a few times. I will be meeting with him on Thursday. I've had a lot of input and emails of different suggestions. The number one thing that the citizens are worried about, even though it's minimal, very small, is is a tax. And we already charge a tax, so maybe there's enough in the general fund. And I would like to direct, if if possible, with the board's permission, to have, how much of the general fund would lose if we earmark that tax amount that is required without raising the tax? How much money would that raise and take out of the general fund? Is it, is it sustainable? There are grants that being given out to run this program, but they're not reliable. If you want something that's going to be there, you're in and you're out. You will have it in your budget and supported. And that, uh, one thing I missed in February, on a positive note, your, uh, the Delta County Drug Sobriety Court graduation. I I went to that, and I was really impressed on what our county offers for people willing to step up and change their lives. This was done on February sixth, two thousand twenty-three. And I feel the next one that comes up, anyone in the community should, should go to it. It is heartbreaking and joyful at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
No comment.
Mr. Barron?
Yes. Oh, I have a quote I want to read here, and it, it's pertaining this Sunday. Uh, we celebrate, uh, people call it Easter, but it's a, it's a whole lot deeper than, than the Easter. We, uh, we celebrate the opportunity for the solution of literally all of our problems to mankind. And I have a quote here. Um, I believe that unarmed truth and unconditional love will have the final word in reality. This is why right temporarily defeated is stronger than evil triumphant. Martin Luther King Jr. Thank you.
First Rocky? Ashley?
No, thank you.
Okay, a couple of things. Um, I wanted to address somebody who I'm fond of and respect, Kay Rowland. I submitted one thing. I'm not the king. I'm the chairman, and the chairman is a servant of the board. And, uh, last Tuesday, uh, I knew when those things got added, if somebody was going to pound the hell out of me. But it was not something that I did nilly willy. The philosophy of the board is anybody can add, any commissioner can add to the agenda. And if I try to afford that, then I'll be called a tyrant or a control freak. So I did submit one item, but I, I thank you for keeping me on my toes. Terms of hundred thousand dollar savings, keeping personalities out of this. If you were to take, uh, the previous administrator and the controller, we spent three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars out the door. Yeah, okay, you're all, everyone's entitled to their own opinions, and that's, whether I like to hear it or not, I encourage you to come here. You're not entitled to your own facts. The fact of that issue is that's what we spent out the door for those two positions. My intention will be to try to streamline this somehow and save the taxpayers of the county about a hundred thousand dollars. And again, that's keeping personalities out of it. Those are just numbers. Um, we have a fiduciary obligation to do so, and that's exactly what I intend on trying to do. In reference to the veterans, Public Act two fourteen is not a suggestion. It's arcane. It was passed in eighteen ninety-nine. But it specifically says that the County Board of Commissioners shall. So Finance Committee will take a look at this again. And, uh, it's not a tax. We're paying back a debt, and we can argue that till we're blue in the face, but I'm not backing off of that position. Everything that we do is predicated on what they've done. And, uh, if somebody can't afford the ten dollars a year, see me, I'll try to help you out. I'm serious about that unless a thousand of you come forward. But I, um, we wouldn't have anything without our veterans. We get four thousand dollars a year, whether you like me or not. One out of four go homeless. Twenty vets every day in the United States kill themselves because of PTSD. You can think Dave Moyles terrible, but you know what? If you can't stand for the flag, I don't know, I can stand you. Okay, you, you're stepping on a lot of great people when you don't do that. If you don't like me, that's fine. Show some respect to our vets, though. That's all I have. We have um meeting scheduled. The Statutory Board of Commissioners meeting is at 4:11:23 at 5:15 here. Regular Commissioners meeting at 4:18, 5:15 here. And on the uh Commissioners Workshop meeting, it's 5:22:33 at 5:00 PM. It would be, uh, we don't have any 30-day appointments, and so in order to adjourn is so moved, so moved. All in favor may leave. Thank you for coming.